Call to order for the approval of the closed session agenda. Mr. Wilk.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approved the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur, seconds. Any discussion? Please vote.
I vote yes.
You got it?
You forgot your thing.
The vote is five yes, three absent. Motion passed.
Next, we'll need a motion to enter closed session. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Wilk.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711, the school board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss and consult with legal counsel for the school board regarding legal investigation revolving the performance, excuse me, of specific personnel, which requires provision of information and legal advice under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1 and 8, and to discuss the performance of employee T2047 and take action as necessary under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1 and 8.
Second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur, seconds. Any discussion? Please vote.
I vote yes.
The vote is five yes, three absent. Motion passed.
Prince William County School Board now enter closed session. Return to open session approximately in 30 minutes. The Board's returning to open session. We need a vote. A motion is in order on closed session certification, 6.01.
Mr. Chairman.
Wilk.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3712, the closed session of our school board meeting on March 11, 2020, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be resolved that the school board hereby certifies that to each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were to be discussed in closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by this Board.
Second, Ms. Ralston. Any discussion? Please vote.
I'm sorry. Don't go breaking my heart.
Oh, Lord.
The vote is six yes, two not present at vote. I'm sorry, five yes, two not present at vote. Motion passed.
So, you know, we are going, so we are going to go potentially, I think we're going back into closed session later.
Yes.
Correct? Right. So, we are not actually, we're just going to now move to the budget work session. So, we're not adjourning the meeting. No. Yeah, but I, yeah, but we have 7.01. So, what do I say now? I mean, we're gonna seven, so we actually have to vote on this?
Yeah, it looks like it.
Okay, so we're adjourning to the next room to complete our work session. Correct?
Yes.
And that's it. So, I guess.
Yes.
All right, well, we're finished.
CBC website. Where you can see each country, how many people, how many, um, ethnic groups, how many people.
I can only imagine. I was curious. About my buddies. They knew your story. Sure. They arrived once. Sure.
Boy, it's gonna be, it's gonna be so wild. I think they're gonna fly out of the stadium. It's like
Yeah, yeah, they'll do that.
Make some noise. I don't know. Make it available.
She did like, did, gathered.
Switching buttons or something, right? Like I'd say, no, they put a game on Saturday.
Yeah, I saw that.
They play one game, and these guys are doing that.
Sorry.
He's a Stanford grad, a PhD.
Thank you very much for Yes, for that and for Very much. And then, um, we're just so I got the impression that you're not Okay. Okay, that's what, right. I'm not sure about this. Okay. That was my question for that. Make sure that I had it clear. Because I was like, there's a whole lot to that. A lot of staying part. Have some more, like, reasons for the character. Like, words out, we're getting
Shock. Very shocked.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Oh, but yeah, you took Yeah, you got smart. But then we can take one. I know. I think my I thought no one wanted anyone. I thought that was a viable option. I mean, she's Well, I tried, I tried to up it today. You always have
Send them to the website.
Almost. Okay.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the second work session for the fiscal year 2021, proposed budget for the Prince William County Schools. We will start by having opening remarks with Superintendent Dr. Steve Walz.
Thank you, Chairman Latif, members of the Board. Just before we launch into this, just want to welcome everybody tonight and also to let you know that we have a fully operational pandemic team, which has been in place for actually a number of years, but it's meeting now twice daily. And Denise Hebner is the chair of that. Denise, stand and be recognized. So, as you know, this is a quickly evolving issue across the world. And to that end, there's a pop-up on every single one of our communication strategies, meaning email or Twitter. There's, all of that information is readily available and accessible on all the different ways that we communicate. And also would want to mention that that changes sometimes multiple times a day. So, you can rest assured that it's current. And finally, just to say that we take our lead from the CDC, the Virginia Department of Health, and work in collaboration with the Governor's Office. So, there's a lot of folks doing a lot of different things in different places, but the CDC and the Governor's Office is recommending that we work closely with them and follow their lead. So, although some places might be doing things that maybe we're not doing, or this school elects for whatever reason to change something or postpone something, the school division itself will continue to take the lead from the CDC and collaborating with the Governor's Office. So, on to the budget. So, tonight, we continue working on the budget, and I place in front of you a school board update. If you look at that fourth bullet circled in red, just to give a brief overview, since this budget asks for more than the mark that we received, and number two, because we don't know exactly what the county will settle on in terms of a tax rate. And further, we, although the conference committee has completed its work with the Governor's Budget, the detail of how that all rolls out is still being analyzed and then will be disseminated to each school district. Those are all in process. So, keeping that in mind, you can make no changes on the budget proposed. You can modify the budget vis-a-vis a straw poll, which is how that works. And the school board does not need to adopt a budget tied to a specific revenue figure. So, the budget is an evolving document, and following the final adoption and the Board of Supervisors' budget adoption, the state and the Governor's Budget, the school board in collaboration with me and the administration can make further adjustments. So, I will just give you my opinion for which you can take it or leave it. A lot of people ran on more, getting more revenue for schools. So, my only concern about cutting the budget is I'm not sure this is the time to take the pressure off the funding agencies. So, with that being said, I will move into the update. And these changes are based on the input, and we, you may recall, we ran around the table just to make sure that at least five board members were interested in doing these things, and these budget adjustments have been made. So, we increased the economically disadvantaged funding at the high school level by adding another $2 million. The middle school by adding another $1 million. I'm just giving you the rough round numbers. I'm told that we need more time to look at the Equity Officer, what that person might do. Pedro Noguera doesn't believe he's one of the big experts in equity and believes that equity is what you do every day, not someone you appoint or necessarily a committee that you have. So, I'm fine with that. So, I took that out, and then the corresponding executive secretary that would report to that person. There was some concern that we'd like to have more social worker support, and there were five Title I schools in particular that the Voice Organization did several hundred interviews with their communities. So, we will spread five additional positions across the elementary schools, but in particular, with the focus on making sure those schools have a full-time person. And then, we took the salaries of every single employee that was getting a 2% bump. So, subs, temps, teaching assistant subs, all the supplementals, coaches, piano accompanists, you name it. And we took every one of those and moved it to the 4.8% average salary that everyone else is getting. Then finally, Mrs. Jesse asked us to take a look at the elementary secretaries. So, this is a great example of how sometimes central office saves money. So, in the budget, last year, you approved a staffing administrator, and we happened to get an amazing person from, stole it, stole her from Loudon. And so, instead of paying a large amount of money to do the staffing reclassification, we can do, we do those in-house now for no additional money. And so, she will be able to do that over the course of the next several months and see if the Board wishes to do that when that's completed.
I'd like to remind everyone, please turn your mics on when you speak.
Is there a reason that it's going to take months? I think that when we look at equity, I, the complaints that I've gotten from people and it's when they look at central office, and I don't begrudge anybody's salary, but that those secretaries at the building level deserve to receive a higher salary, maybe by reclassification or extension of their contract. I think in my notes, it said it would cost $430,000 to do that. $433,100. Is there a reason why we couldn't just do that and not have a study?
I think it defeats the purpose of everyone who goes through a reclassification process to come in in some other way and just bypass that whole thing and say, we're gonna do this.
But what about an extension of their days? That's not a reclassification.
Well, again, we can, we can find out what her workload is, what she's involved with now. She's done some pretty aggressive work. We reclassified 400 and some people this year. So.
Dr. Walz, I think it would be in our interest to really look at that because now that we have associate superintendents up there and we have the salaries for this executive secretaries, and again, I don't want everybody up here to be angry with me because I'm not trying to take away your salaries. I'm just saying that when you have two at 194 and you have these secretaries out in these buildings, and I've done it for 20 years, and I know that they deserve to be extended, or I'd like for you guys to really think about that.
We will do that.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
Well, this is easy. Hey, guys, it's gonna be easy. He's gonna give us everything we want.
He said he would think about it. Okay, let's be very clear.
Thank you.
Okay. Continue, Dr. Walz.
So, with that.
With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wallenford. Thank you.
Dr. Latif, members of the Board, Dr. Walz, thank you. Dr. Walz covered the issues I wanted to talk about. The General Assembly, the House and Senate have finished their work. They adjourned on Sunday. The conference report has actually been released, and we've seen the numbers statewide. The Virginia Department of Education provides for us something they call CALP tools. It's a spreadsheet that defines all the revenues precisely that come to us, defined by, it's defined by every locality. As of about an hour ago, that wasn't released. Last year, we received it, oh, I think it was about noon the day of the second work session. And produced those numbers. We just don't have them yet. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we will go to discussion and questions. And we have a, everyone has the ground rules in front of them. And we will start, if someone is ready to start, or we'll go in order. I think Justin Wilk is ready to start.
Is this opening, is this round one?
Yes.
Opening statement?
Get it together.
And again, the opening statement.
We don't vote on anything.
Well, I thought we were supposed to, at some point, determine we could take it as recommended or make the changes. I thought we had to do that before.
Usually, they do. They take a straw poll to see if they want to accept the budget as recommended.
Well, I'm assuming we're not, okay. Do you want to accept the budget as recommended? So, stick your hand up. All in favor of accepting the budget as recommended, say aye or put your hand up. Okay. All opposed? That's everybody. Okay, so now we move on.
Okay, so as you move into this.
I see that as rule number one. I should have read the instructions.
That's all right.
That's okay.
So, again, number two has not always been in there, but we had one year in particular where, well, let me just say, it's in there now. It is an option for anyone who wants to speak to make a general or opening remark. Certainly, you do not have to.
Sure. Let's start with Justin. You want to do opening, let's do opening remarks. Okay, who would, you want to start with opening remarks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. Yes, as the superintendent said, many candidates, including myself, ran on increased funding for our schools to improve student performance and achievement. My recommendations of cuts tonight, in my opinion, will be things that, in my opinion, do not affect the performance and achievement of my students. And those will be my recommendations, being fiscally responsible for the taxpayers in my district, giving my supervisor member the cover to support raising the tax rate because I've heard from members of the BOCs that they feel that there's a lot of superfluous things in our budget, and these are things that I will be aiming to remove tonight from my Board. So, those are my opening statements.
Okay, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From my perspective, I'd just like to thank the superintendent and his staff for the time and energy put forth into putting this budget together. I would like to emphasize to my fellow Board members that we have made a ginamis, gigantic ask of the BOCs and taxpayers in this county to fulfill what we hear often, and that is to fund our education. Every last one of us ran on the promise of supporting our students and the education system here in this county. And we do have a wonderful education system. No system is perfect in its entirety, but when I travel nationwide for our conferences and things of that nature, we consistently are a shining star amongst our peers and our competitors. Sometimes we don't look as fancy, but the work we do outpaces them. So, I would say to my fellow Board members, please, when we talk about the budget and making adjustments, that we consider our language carefully because there are new members of the BOCs as well. So, when they say that they don't understand or our budget is, I like that word, Justin. Sup, sup, say it again? Superfluous. Thank you. It's okay, we're all about vocabulary here. That we take into consideration how important language is. And I would just ask my fellow Board members to use words like reallocate or adjust because if we are truly serious about funding our educational system and raising our pre-pupil expenditure, we can't use words like cuts because that gives the BOCs opportunity to do that, which is to not fulfill our ask and fully fund us. So, that is my ask of us tonight, and when we consider the budget, there's, if we don't agree with something, we can always move it or reallocate it, as I've said before. And also, I would also like to mention while we are undertaking this task, that it is also up to us to educate our new counterparts on the BOCs as to what it is that they are funding and how important it is, and to remind them that when people move to communities, they move because of schools. They don't move necessarily because of parks or because of tax rates. But what is gonna be the future and the outcome, which is our children. So, thank you.
Ms. Ralston. Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I basically echo both of their comments. I know, coming into this brand, brand-new, looking at all the numbers and how the budget is put together, I had a lot of questions. I'm also a taxpayer here, so I do want to make sure that our tax dollars are going to the, directly to the students as much, as much as they can. We have to run buses and things like that as well. But I've also just realized so much more just over the past few weeks, how much we get out of our education system here. And I like to tell people that we seem to run on a chronically underfunded educational system in general. We can, I want us to do better. I want us to make sure that we have enough staffing, we have the schools built, we have safe, clean buildings, things like that. That's not a judgment statement, I'm just saying, as we keep, continue growing in the county. So, the decisions that we're making tonight, I feel confident that this Board will be making the best decisions possible. I like to think about more reality. I like to think about more reallocation of funds rather than cuts, just like you said. I think that's a perfect way to phrase it and just understand that our children, they are getting a world-class education and we can continue to move into bigger and better spaces with this.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to start out by saying thank you to all of the staff and others who have worked so hard on putting this together and answering our questions. I know it's been a lot of work. I appreciate the efforts. So thank you for that. Also, I just wanted to say that my general budget outlook or viewpoint would just be put as much money into the teacher hands of the teachers into the classroom as possible, recognizing that, you know, some support roles are essential because they help those teachers do their very best work. And also, you know, using money wisely, I mean, being conscious of the fact that it is taxpayer money that we're spending. So but yes, education is important. We do a great job. It is extreme. I echo Ms. Williams' comments that when people move into an area, they want to know about the schools. It's very, very important. What we're doing is very important and I appreciate all the efforts in getting the budget up and proposal state. Thanks for all that hard work.
Ms. Jackson.
I just want to take a moment and thank the superintendent and his staff for answering all the questions and listening to us last time to make adjustments. I'm kind of curious to see how you did that. Also, to the principals who have met with me. And I also want to echo what Ms. Williams said about reallocating our funds because, as Ms. Zargarpur mentioned, our schools are underfunded and I wouldn't this budget is trying to address the schools being underfunded. So I think reallocation is a great verb. We're now both. And I'm looking forward to working with the school board and superintendent staff to come up with a great budget. Thank you.
Ms. Jesse.
I too want to thank the superintendent and his staff for this budget. I know it's a great deal of work and I know we ask crazy questions and you did a good job answering those questions. I had all of this, all these items to discuss the whole equity plan. I do think that equity is something that we really need to look at, but later, as we talk, I would like for us to look at a plan for equity for the school system. When I, you know, when I came on this board, I came on this board saying that as a principal and being in education Title I, it was always about student learning. And I, when I looked at this budget, I kind of looked at it through the lens of whether or not children were learning. We can talk about facilities, we can talk about all these other things, but at the end of the day, it's all about learning. And I'd also like to announce that Mr. Kenny Bodie has asked me to, he and I will be doing a town hall on March 19th. And you guys have agreed to help me with that. I appreciate that because I want to make sure that we're in sync. I think that he is very interested and members of the Board of Supervisors are very interested in providing us with additional funds. As you know, it's not always about funding, but at the end of the day, again, it's always about student learning.
Thank you. I'll keep you brief. Thank you, Dr. Waltz, staff. As I said the last time, this is an incredible amount of work that goes into this and I can't thank you enough for doing this. This is on the heels of our extremely historic budget from last year and the really good work that last year's budget did regarding student success, safety and security, salary increases and space and infrastructure. And all of those areas are given enormous attention and detail in this year's budget as well. And these are very important areas that we are constantly working on. I'd like to remind the public, remind the Board of County Supervisors that we continue to be the lowest per pupil school division in the Northern Virginia area. So when, and I do take umbrage with criticism regarding our spending when we are delivering one of the highest qualities of education in the area, we people are coming here to live because of our schools and we have great success in the metrics as we talked about. We have challenges, but for what the taxpayer is getting for the dollar that they are spending on our schools, I believe is the best deal in Northern Virginia. And I would remind all the Board members that, you know, as we talk about the budget, you know, this is going to be another historic budget. This is, you know, we went out there this year and asked the County Board of Supervisors for what we are needing. We've never done that. I think that's been a failure of the passports by not asking for what you've needed. And I think that continues to be the cause of being chronically underfunded. And so as we go into this, I think I will give a lot of credit to the staff for putting together a budget that I believe is a needs-based budget. Certainly, we can reallocate money, repurpose cat money, we can make cuts, you know, all of those things are really important. That's what we'll do tonight. But that's how I look at this and, you know, I can just remind everyone that this school division has done an extraordinary job, I believe, with the taxpayer dollars and has done that responsibly over the course of the last 15 years. Okay, Dr. Walt.
Just a final wrap-up. Would also just like to again remind you, and we can certainly get this list out to you, but we still have on the table 289,714,723 of critical unmet needs that never that isn't appearing anywhere in here.
That's even with the budget requests we're asking. We are still short, say the big number, what, 293? Two, let's say it again.
289 million.
290 million dollars. 289 is the number that we are still short of. If we wanted to do everything we thought we should. And that is based on our critical needs.
And so, again, that was a several-month process that actually starts in the fall, coming through the schools with principal representatives and every office in the Central Office. We have a two-full-day budget conference where we pour over and listen to the requests, the rationales, why, and put a cost to those things. And additionally, I just wanted to say, if we're doing reallocations or cuts or whatever you'd like to call it, one of the things that we've always been afforded the opportunity to do in the past is when we're having the questions to have either me or the person most responsible, just give their opinion about the implications of whatever change you're proposing. The reason for that is because sometimes you think, well, I really want, you know, it's, hey, I was a classroom teacher and I remember getting a budget of, you know, this much. These are your supplies for the year. Turn in your order. So nobody supports a teacher more than me. That being said, working my way up over the years, there's a lot of things that you have to learn about how a gigantic system with a huge transportation system, a huge food service system, custodial system, capital improvement plan, there are a lot of things, moving parts that have to be attended to. So we wouldn't make a long interjection of the implications, but I think if I were in your shoes, I'd want to know, well, if we reallocate 100,000 and take it away from this, what is the are there any implications that you think are serious enough to bring to our attention? I call that informed decision-making.
Outstanding, sir. Thank you. You want to start, Mr. Wilk? You got the red marker in your hand.
Yes, I'd like to start with the lowest hanging fruit, in my opinion. I move to reallocate, reallocate, move that somewhere, but to eliminate the one-time funding for a K-2 survey on homework standards, base grading testing and assignments over break. And that would free up $250,000 to be used on something later.
Okay, so we can we can just vote that up or down, right? Sure. I think you did get answers in your, so this was a budget question and you should have got extensive answers on this, but let's, would you like to have one of your staff?
No further comment.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of removing that survey from the budget? Say aye or hands up. How about hands up? Hands up. Okay, that's out. Let's cross that. Next. It's a majority. Well, whoever's next, whoever wants to go next. Who wants to go next? Are you ready, Lisa? Remember, Dr. Waltz had listed up, if you want to put back the slide, Mr. Wallingford, on what they increased and what they added based on our last work session, so you all know, we don't have to go through that again.
Yeah, again, we took copious notes, so we tried to include every single change you wanted to make with at least the majority.
Two million? Who are you?
Yeah.
Okay. Keeping it.
Oh, yes, we're keeping all of that. That was based on the last work session. I'm just reminding you, we don't have to go over that today unless you want to. That's all, I mean, do you, please.
No, 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 we don't have to. I don't mind leaving early.
Okay. So do you have any burning questions or desires or anything that you want to?
No, I think you put everything in.
Okay. Outstanding.
It came out well.
Yes, Ms. Ralston. I think it did too. Okay, Ms. Zargarpur.
So looking at superintendent staff for two associate superintendent positions, I am recommending cutting it into just one position. So it goes from 661,000 to about 330.
So which one would you like to cut?
Well, I don't have that. I thought that would give you.
So one's a middle school associate superintendent, one's a high school superintendent.
Yeah, so we talked about the middle school one.
Yeah, I mean, we can we can certainly have Dr. Waltz answer to that or if you have any concerns or, go ahead, Dr. Waltz.
So one of the big challenges here over the years, and let's take Fairfax as an example, they have a team of people that are in each area. We have one person and a secretary for high school, one for middle, and then three for elementary. But what I found interesting in looking at more metrics than just the number of schools is, take a listen. So in the at the middle school, Mr. Bixby has 18 schools, 21,000 students and 63 administrators, so handling every problem, every concern, every issue. At the high school, we have 13 high schools involving 27,890 students and 99 administrators and one person overall of that. So just to end this, I'll give you a comparison when I had one of those jobs coming up. So I was in the Baltimore County Public Schools. In that school system, when I was the Northwest Area Superintendent, I supervised 28 elementary, middle and high schools. I had an elementary director, a middle school director, a high school director. Each one of those were promoted from premier principalships. Each one of those has had an executive secretary, had a special education specialist and a pupil personnel worker who each had a secretary. So when I came here and saw how they were, you know, people can say you never need an administrator until you need one. So, I mean, again, whatever the Board decides, we will make it work.
I add something, Dr. Waltz. Not Dr. Waltz.
Ms. Williams and then Mr. Wilk.
As the person who pushed the hardest for the employee compensation study that was done before some of the new members were seated a few years ago, and as someone who's talked to their counterparts, these individual position counterparts in other counties, I know that we get as a Board a lot of the Kelly Building staff and they get paid too much and we don't need. However, I'm not a fan of spending any additional money, but I do know that those two positions are positions that handle everything, not just issues that occur in the school, but for example, I'm sorry, Mr. Bixby, I'm going to pick on you a little bit, but this is a gentleman who like once a week goes into the school and works from there and is hands-on. I firmly believe this is needed because we're understaffed and we do have the research behind it to say that. So I'm going to stand my ground and not support that simply because I think that we do need the additional staff. We continue to grow. We have another middle school opening. We have projected up into a 15th high school. So we won't be having any reduction of students or any reduction of issues, positive and negative. We'll only continue to grow without the staff to support it. So that's my position.
Mr. Wilk?
I respect that position. I think going along with this, I think definitely it's something we could look into. My idea, why I believe, what I view this as is more phasing this in to see how it looks dividing the high school first, high schools between east or west or something like that, between the two roles and responsibilities, to see how that goes before we go ahead and do it at the middle school level. And if that seems to go well with the Board and, you know, other things like Ms. Williams saying, the benefits of something like this, then I think I'd be more open to adding this position in the budget for the middle school one next fiscal year.
Ms. Jesse.
How many schools do the elementary?
They average 21 schools, 13,939 students and 43 administrators.
So they have 30, 21 schools?
Yes.
Each?
Average, on average. 13, about 14,000 each.
Was there a reason that we considered a high school and middle and not elementary?
Because in the time that I've been here, that's the one area we did add an additional associate. We used to have two and then we added one a few years back.
When I talk to people about this budget, the one thing, I know that Ms. Williams says that it doesn't look top-heavy, but it does. And that's the one complaint that I've gotten and I think that I know she and I agree on a lot of things, but we don't agree on this. I do think that one position, try the one position and then add another position at that level. I know how hard all of them work, but I think the elementary, 20 elementary, when you deal with elementary people, you've got problems every day. You've got numerous problems every single day. So I'm not sure that the high school or middle school is more deserving. I'm not sure that we need to really, in the next budget, look at the elementary also. So that's my position.
So let's just call the vote on this. Just so you know, I mean, Lily, there are three currently at the elementary level. Oh, yeah, sure, sure. Did anybody else want to, yeah, weigh in on this? Ms. Jackson.
Is it okay if I ask a question because it's hard for me to make a decision? Where were the funds reallocated to get the 2 million and then that would kind of help me kind of get an idea where we at?
Yes, I'll defer to Mr. Wallingford for a brief explanation on that.
Just to be clear, the question was where did the funds come from to supply the 2 million dollars for the high school economically disadvantaged funding?
Well, I guess all of them in general, but yes.
Okay, so all of the funds that you see up there, it's about 3.5 million dollars, came from two sources. One is slippage. Slippage is one of the items that you saw in one of the groups of questions. I don't recall which one it was. Slippage simply stated is the difference between what we budget for salaries and benefits and what the actual costs are. And it's typically a function of vacancy and turnover in staff. You hire younger, less expensive employees. And from from those two places, you actually find a little bit more than what you budget. Okay? So that's one of those places. The other place is a reserve we have called the holdback allocation. And so when we build budgets, finance folks like me have a very, very strong need to be cautious and we try to stack away a little bit for a rainy day, simply stated. And from those two places, slippage and the holdback allocation is where those funds come from. At this point, there's really not very much room left in either of those after pulling that 3.5 million dollars out. Thank you.
Any other questions or thoughts on this specific topic? Ms. Williams.
So I'd like to remind us, the Board, that I understand that people believe the Kelly Building is top-heavy, but we actually have proof that it's not. So not to belittle anyone's belief because you are entitled to feel or believe how you want, but we legitimately pay 250,000. want, but we legitimately pay $250,000 as a division to say we are not top-heavy. And I can't emphasize enough, we are adding schools, and it's the daily things. I don't know if you're aware, but we will be starting to do things like ACE awareness training. Our students themselves have been pushing for mental health days, all of these new things. The governor is getting ready to add to a requirement, equity reporting. So, the requirements that these individuals will have is only going to continue to go up. So, that, I'm sorry to be a little aggressive about it, but I firmly believe that in order to run a well-oiled machine, you have to staff it. More than welcome to look at the salary if that bothers people. You can have that discussion with Dr. Walt, but to not be able, not, to not be staffed to do the job, we run the risk of bringing out our current employees and not having the job done as well as it could be.
Mr. Chairman?
So, this is your second round.
Yeah, I appreciate Ms. Williams' response, and again, you know, respectfully disagree. I do believe in the sense that, yes, it's important to have and add these positions, but again, I would like to see the effectiveness and the benefits of something like this before we go ahead and add two of these positions. I understand what she's saying about the understaff and the $250,000 survey and stuff like that, which is why I'm willing to support adding one. But at this point, I just, I can't move forward and go with two.
Ms. Jessie?
In that study, did it address associate superintendents in particular? No, I'm talking about associate superintendents. I think that, in my, I think, we all say there's been a study, but I have to tell you that the consistent complaint I'm getting from the public, and we're talking about, you know, the raising taxes and this type of thing, and from some of the members of the board supervisors, they look at this and they say that we're adding two more associates, we're adding two secretaries at a cost of $194,000. That's a lot of money. Executive secretaries are $194,000. Two. Two. Am I right? Yeah. And we're looking at the attorney staff. There are lots of other things, but, and I know how hard everybody works, but I also feel that people in the, I think that if we have to study whether or not a secretary, please, Lori, please. Please, please let me finish. If we have to study classification of elementary secretaries out in the field, I think that I, I'm not feeling that strongly about it as Lori's feeling about it, but I do think that the idea of adding one would, that's just my opinion, and I appreciate your consideration.
Ms. Walt?
So, I think considering, I mean, I think it's, considering the growth that we've had happen in our school division over the past, I don't know, 10 years or so, it does seem reasonable to me to add superintendents, or associate superintendents and support staff at this level. I don't, I mean, I obviously, I would like to see the data from that survey about, you know, how are we in proportion to our administrative level versus our teachers? But it does concern me that we have grown a lot with our student body. We have a lot of high school students and a lot of middle school students, and administration, even though they are not working directly with the students, they are supporting the people who are. So, I do see that there could be a great need based on the fact that we have so many more students in our division.
Okay, I'm just, we'll take the vote. I just, quick, my statement on this is, after seeing some of the adjustments made up there, I'm actually going to support this position. So, I will, I'll ask, just for everyone to know, but let's go ahead and vote, and all in favor of removing the position, as Justin Wilk has recommended, or Ms. Zargarpur, all in favor of removing it, say aye. The middle school division. Well, actually, you need to, yeah, did you say the middle school?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, all in favor of removing the middle school associate superintendent from the budget? That looks like three. Okay, all opposed to removing it. So, that is four, and one abstention. Or five, we'll take it a five, we'll take a five. Five, I mean, we have it at four, so it's done. We're just, I'm just trying to move things along. Ms. Ralston, you were good, right? Ms. Williams?
I don't have the numbers, but I have received considerable feedback on the addition of TAs in every kindergarten classroom. So, that is my ask, if it is able to be funded in the budget. I don't have the numbers for that, so I don't, I'm okay if everyone is uncomfortable doing a vote on it, but that is my ask.
And you want us to vote on it now?
So, let me be clear, you asked that there's a TA provided in every single kindergarten classroom.
Yes.
Did you have a budget request on that? Did we get an answer on how much that would cost?
No, that's, I'm making that perfectly clear.
I think that would be, it would be difficult to vote on that tonight.
Can I, can?
Yeah, I don't know if we have a number on that. Yeah, Mr. Wilk?
I just, okay, my thing would be where the reallocations, excuse me, becoming to make such an ask of that?
Well, that's why I said, provided there's funding to support it, not guaranteed.
Can we table that till later then?
We can, we have.
Mr. Wallingford, yeah, Mr. Wallingford has an answer, and certainly that could be brought up at the next, Mr. Wallingford?
We don't have that number available immediately, but it's about, do you have it, Natasha? It was about 3-point-something million, if I recall, right? $3.4 million.
How would you like to proceed on that, Ms. Williams? I mean, I think that would be something that, at such a large amount, would be, I mean, we should probably, well, what are your thoughts?
So, due to the cost, I mean, I've been asked significantly to make this ask, so I stand by my ask. I don't think that we have the money in the budget to fund it, so I would like for it to be, remain open for consideration as we consider future budgets.
I assume no one opposes her request. How about we'll go to Jen Wong? You can pass as well. Okay, Adele Jackson?
Passing for no.
Okay, Ms. Jessie?
I'm sort of like Ms. Williams, I'm not sure I have a number on this, so I'm just going to pass out to the board some information. It's about student learning. And several people in the room know that my daughter does SAT tutoring and has been looking at our performance on SAT. And as you can see, our average, and by school, the red means that you can't get into those schools. And I noticed that in the budget, how much do we have for SAT 100? I think it's.
The SAT prep class was about $150,000. I'll get you the precise number. It is 150, yes.
I think that we would really need to sit down and chat with her and other individuals about this, our students, you know, some schools are not using SAT as a prerequisite, but I think that one of the things is Algebra, Algebra I, Algebra II. As you, Fairfax County has higher SAT scores, but starting at the elementary, middle, and not the middle, at, starting at the elementary and middle school level, you start thinking about a program for getting these kids into algebra earlier. And I would, I guess I'm asking you guys to relook at that, because after-school tutorial programs, one, a lot of the lower-income kids cannot afford the tutoring programs. SAT tutoring can come, cost from $100 to $150, $50 an hour. So, the middle-class schools, the parents who have that money can afford it, and I would like for us to look at that. The whole equity issue is, I really need, think we need to really look at, and I guess this is two requests, an equity audit of some kind. You know how we did the special ed audit?
So.
To look at where we are in terms of, where do we go with this whole plan? Do we look at SAT? Do we look at for student performance? Do we look at all the other things? But I would like for us to relook at the allocation and maybe perhaps a design, a program design, a better program design for SAT.
So, let's have Ms. Rita Goss talk about what that SAT spending will be. That was also in your budget question and answers last week, but I'll have Ms. Jessie, or Ms. Goss.
So, before we do that, would you mind just sharing the source of this? Did you create this, the data, or where did it come from? You created it, okay. Your daughter created, okay.
It's from a very reliable source.
Okay.
I assure you, and we use your data to come up with our scores.
I hadn't seen it before, so that's why I was.
It was, it was developed this week. I just want us to look at, as we look at the SAT performance, I'd like for us to have a more comprehensive approach, and maybe that was part of the whole equity piece, but I just want to bring this to the attention of the, Ms. Goss.
So, that's why we have added new monies into the budget. Rita?
I think I want more money, but I'm not sure how much more money I want, but I want a more programmatic stuff.
Excellent, so let's let Rita say what she has to say, and then.
So, the current $150,000 will go to, kind of address exactly what you were talking about. It would provide all students who want to take part in a free SAT prep course. The money's going to go to the materials, resources, and also paying stipends to teachers to run those in the schools. We're working not only on SAT prep, but also ACT prep for students. Just very quickly, because I could talk about it a long time, but just please know that we're doing a number of efforts to try to really look at a long-range plan, not just SAT prep, but if you look at our talent development that we're doing in the K-2, and all of our gifted teachers are pushing into classrooms, we have a number of mechanisms. One of the other things that we're working on is putting together a middle school program and upper elementary summer program that would be an enrichment program. So, that is all in process. But this specific $150,000 would go for the materials, resources, and pay for that free, free to students after school, SAT or ACT prep, and also the stipends to teachers to do that. It's 150,000.
Well, 150, can I just chat with you at a different time about this?
I'm always happy to chat, absolutely.
Thank you. I just, I think we need a little bit more comprehensive program, and there's some research on after-school programs for SATs prep. I'd like to see something during the day, maybe a course, but anyway, I think it's kind of like her situation, where we don't have all the data, but we just know we need more. Thank you.
So, you didn't make any formal request to add more money to the SAT prep, right? Okay, no, so we're, just one question on that. Was the SAT stuff that you're doing middle school as well, or just high school?
No, we are also working on programs to support middle and also elementary.
Okay.
No, the, that's in addition to.
Are you looking at?
So, the 150,000 is just dedicated to those, to us building that after-school.
Are you looking at Algebra, Algebra I and Algebra II?
Absolutely. In the last few years, and I'm happy to talk to you a little bit further, we've done a number of things to open up access and get more students into Algebra I earlier, but I'd be happy to talk to you about that.
Yeah, because our SAT performance, we really need to improve in that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on that? So, we just sort of valid, does anyone have an issue with the SAT spending? So, we're all good with that, so that stays in the budget. Okay. Next, we'll go to.
Can I make a point? When people want to add things, it's hard to add things if we're not reallocating things.
Got it, got it. Thank you, Mr. Wilk, so it's your turn now.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to move that we support the stadium enhancements for the one-time Brentsville Stadium enhancements, but we reallocate the turf practice football field to some other area. I'm saying I support.
So, let's make, let's make it simple, right? So, yeah, so we'll make it simple, so we'll change the Brentsville spending to just doing the concessions and the stadium improvements.
All the enhancements other than the practice turf football field.
Practice turf field. For this year.
Yes, the one-time funding this year.
Yeah, yeah, the one-time funding.
It frees up at least a million dollars.
1.6, I think, to be exact.
Outstanding.
That's in your informational items.
Oh, thank you.
Get your act together.
Thank you.
Okay, all in, well, let's have a, you wanted some comment on that, right?
Got a little bit of history on this. So, Brentsville is the old, our oldest high school. Lots of needs there. They, this, there was concern on the board about the equity when we began adding turf fields to the stadiums. When are we going to get them all done? So, that we don't have the haves and have-nots with turf fields. So, when we originally listed the schools and the rollout of when those would be, there was great consternation at Brentsville because they have a nationally-recognized turf program. It's also a part of their CTE program. They've got a course out there, and they have received, as you know from my board superintendent's time comments, received national acclaim, I think, every year for like three years in a row from multiple organizations that include golf courses and everything else. So, they were very concerned because they didn't want their main stadium to have a turf field. So, you know, the thinking was that, well, that we could give them a practice field because when you have a grass field, there's certain care and the amount of play you can have on it, and the fact that, you know, whenever we have turf, we get a lot of other schools and activities over there to use that turf field because it can withstand non-stop use. Well, the stadium field over at Brentsville, if it's going to remain grass, it's not, it can't withstand non-stop use. So, to me, the equitable thing to do was be to put a turf practice field so that you can have all these, not just Brentsville, but the way we work with Park and Recs, you can have all these, and other schools can use that practice field essentially any time that we're open for rentals or other team use or other school use.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
Question, Mr. Wilk, is this just a temporary deferment for a later date?
Potentially. I think with the ads that we have, given, I think this is a great opportunity to expand their grass program to the practice field as well with that CTE program, so that's why it's not an immediate jump for me to make this investment.
Question from Dr. Walt, do they have an agricultural program out there, or is it just a turf program?
I'll let Mr. Mulgrew come up and speak to that. And Mr. Mulgrew, if you have anything else that you would like to add regarding this, and also Mr. Shiroki? Where is he?
Crap, sorry. Thought I remembered them, like, riding lawn mowers or something out there.
The reason I'd like Mr. Shiroki is because generally speaking, when we go in and we do work, you actually save money when you're doing all these things at the same time, as opposed to coming in with construction over a multi-year period.
The program used to be called Horticulture. It's an agricultural program, but the teacher took fire, and so did the students. It's an outstanding program, and they've taken real-world applications, and they've applied it to the turf management. They're taking the principles that they learned in the agriculture part, and they're applying and they're applying it to the turf management. The field is outstanding, and so is the program.
So do you have any comments about the practice field or the need for that? Or Justin's proposal?
I think it would be very difficult to task the students with doing what they do on the game field, turning around to do it on a practice field. And we could have Title IX implications because of the, the ability on the practice field, the, yeah, to make sure that we were good with female sports having access to. The, the field is absolutely gorgeous, and it's a tremendous field. It just cannot take the daily input. We would be working with that. I'd have, I'd have to get back to you about that, but the, I mean, that's a college-level football field. It looks like it's college-level as far as the, as far as the turf inside of there. They're incredible.
Okay.
But the daily wear aspect would be what the issue would be.
Ms. Jackson?
So when I first saw the line item in the budget, I was concerned because of the turf program, and then I sought out input from my community, and they, anybody within the Brentsville district that has emailed me has supported the practice turf field. And I would say that it does kind of create more equity, given the age of the school, and I fully support it at this point. And I have a question for Mr. Shiroki. Does the Knoxville School show that when they are practicing too? Because I'm on the practice field, because it also adds additional students that would also use it.
Nathaniel?
Yes.
I don't know if he has the answer, but we called him up, just in case.
I'll do my best to answer it. There are some shared facilities. I'm not, I can't speak specifically if there are programs at the Knoxville School that actually use that turf, turf, turf field. But I know that there is some, some sharing of facilities.
We'll go to Ms. Walt and then Ms. Williams.
So, so that I'm clear, was this, Brentsville was slated, it was their turn to do a turf field, but you said.
Yes, this is in a previously approved CIP. The only thing we did was actually a year ago with, with the same board minus the three newest members. So this was approved in a previous CIP, and in the previous CIP, I clarified that we would be doing this. So this is actually nothing new this year.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
I'm curious about the Title IX concerns because we, this is the first that I remember as a board member hearing about Title IX. Because when we did Freedoms, they didn't, they didn't have a practice. They were built without a practice field. They were practicing on Ask for Hope. And then last year with Woodbridge, when they were doing shared spaces. So I, I'd like some more information on the Title IX implications. And do we have other highs, so, which leads me to my next question is, are all of our high schools then, do they have the adequate number of fields? So all of them have a stadium field and a practice field? Do other schools' facilities have additional practice fields countywide? If we're talking about equity? Because I'd rather have, my personal opinion is I'd rather have, each school have an equitable number of fields as opposed to turf or grass. Because that's really, I would think, would be the type, where the Title IX issue would lay at. But I'm not an expert, if you want to.
I will share with you on the turf part of it. The, when the field is in the, when your field is the turf that Brentsville has, which is natural turf, there's, there comes to practice facilities. One of the advantages we had at Freedom and why I supported putting the turf, the, the manufactured turf, the turf fields that we're discussing, is that you can use it all the time. So the girls can practice on it, the boys can practice on it, and you do not wear out the field. On the natural surface, it is a beautiful surface. It's top shelf, but it will wear out, as the superintendent was trying to say. Having the alternative on the practice field is that the girls would have a very quality place for them to practice field hockey. And that was what I intended to say, whether I, that came out or not. But they would have adequate facilities equal to everybody else because they would be able to do that. Playing on the turf is fine for practice, for, for girls. But on a daily basis, if you put your field hockey there, on the turf field at Brentsville, on the stadium field, you would wear it out. So they would have a very quality surface to practice on for the rest, soccer included.
Why aren't we doing this through bonded money, through the normal sort? Just a question, Mr. Wallingford.
We could, we could do the Brentsville upgrades either through additional sale of debt or through cash. As we went through the budget process, the determination was made to try and use cash to fund this because we had some available cash to use, and we're concerned about debt ceilings. So, you know, we're approaching, and we'd like to try and stay away from that, that gap.
So we, we, you did a little magic with the slippage and the other stuff. And that remains to be seen. But 2 million bonded for a new construction project would seem to me something that could fit into the CIP. Can we, can we, you, I assume you looked at that. So you're telling me you looked at that and you thought cash would be better, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then on the, it's the same thing with the renovation sense. The whole project you looked at for possibly bonding, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And this is a question that I have also for you, Mr. Wallingford. If we, we, we go ahead and propose this budget to the BOCs and they don't fully fund it, when we come back to sit here and think about what we have to take off, what are the things that we're going to take off? I mean, that's, we're going to have to have this discussion again. How are we prioritizing what we may not get from the county? So for example, could I say, hey, look, I'd support this Brentsville project, but, you know, if the county doesn't want to fund our request, this would be the first thing cut? Just a thought. I mean, I mean, is that something that we could do? I mean, how do we, how do we think through what's going to happen? Because otherwise, we're going to have seven, eight or more of these sessions.
So the answer to your question is yes. And as a follow-up to that, what, what would, what would happen is when we get the final revenue numbers, I will take all these decisions because I know these are the decisions that we had the majority of the board support, all of the work from tonight. And then based on that, I would come back with a recommendation on how to close that. Or certainly if the board chose to do something like that, again, the answer was yes. So a similar way to handle it would be to hear other board members' input at that time and then make a decision based upon the pleasure of the majority of the board. Again, the answer being yes.
So I guess the question is, we're going to vote on, so we have a couple of options here. Not, I mean, not options, just things to think through as, as I look at it, as Dr. Walz points out. So the, the recommendation is by Mr. Wilk to remove the turf part of it from the Brentsville construction and to this year and consider doing it possibly for next year. That's, that's an option. Can, can we also vote to add it to the CIP for this year? Is that possible?
What's that?
Can we vote to just add it to the CIP rather than using cash? Meaning bond it out for next year?
So the CIP is both cash and debt funded. So the funding source is a conversation one could have. Where it is on the CIP is a different question. That's also a conversation you could have. Mr. Wilk has presented the idea that it not be in the current year, in fiscal '21. Hasn't made a suggestion about what the funding source is, however.
So. So again, just to be clear, a couple of considerations. One is, I know you've looked at there a couple of times. So these are ongoing things. Like, once that gets built into the base of the budget, it will remain in there. Whereas this is one-time money. The other piece to this is if we did not do the turf practice field, then we wouldn't be doing the LED lighting. So that whole thing is 1.425.
Ms. Williams?
I really like your question, Dr. Latif, because it is our job to decide what the school division needs, and it's the BOCs's job to allocate the funding or not. So I kind of like that perspective. I don't know how you feel, Mr. Wilk.
So we're going to, we're going to vote up or down on Mr. Wilk's recommendation? Is that what you'd like us to do, Mr. Wilk?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Jackson?
So just to clarify, if we don't do the turf field, I know you just said this, but I just want to make sure I fully understand. We will not be putting any lights in over in the practice area?
Correct.
So the same schedule restrictions that they have right now, because there's no lights, but still continue?
Correct.
Can, can someone clarify why the lights can't go up without the field?
I'll let Mr. Shiroki.
This project obviously is a athletic improvement or enhancement project, and there are some, several pieces that are part of this. If you were to vote to remove the synthetic turf field from, from that item, you would also be removing the new lighting that would be for the, the new practice field, the new synthetic turf practice field. We would still be upgrading the lighting on the stadium field as it exists today, which they do have lighting, but they do need to be improved, as well as.
Ms. Williams?
Is that how we're writing a request for the proposal? Is that a package bundle?
Mr. Wilk? So, so, okay, so we'll do a straight-up vote. All in favor of keeping, or so all in favor of taking Mr. Wilk's recommendation to remove the turf field for this fiscal year from the Brentsville Stadium, vote aye.
And lighting.
Lighting for the practice field, not for the stadium. The stadium is included.
This is all the same, the turf practice field with lighting.
Yeah, but there won't be a turf, well, I guess, so you're not going to put lighting on the current practice field. Right, but you're improving the lighting in the stadium. Yeah, that's happening no matter what.
Right, but it's, it's more than removing the turf practice field. It's the turf field and the lighting that accompanies it for 1.425.
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Yes. So the vote will be, who is in favor of removing the turf field? And the li, turf, the turf field lighting and practice lighting from the Brentsville Stadium project for this fiscal year? All in favor? Now, that, that being said, Mr., so all opposed is going to be seven. Favor is one. Now, that being said, I would, I would, you know, reiterate the idea that when we, the budget is, when we're coming back here to deal with what's going to happen with the BOCs, these are some of the projects that we're going to have to deal with.
I vehemently disagree in calling that our future because I am an advocate for the fact that we will get the funding because, you know, you have to speak these things into an existence, and it's our job to emphasize to the BOCs that this is a needs-based budget, and so we have to ask for it. So I refuse to accept that we will be coming back here to cut things until we're actually forced to come back here to cut things. I'm sorry to disagree with you, Mr. Jackson.
No, it's not a disagreement. I appreciate your optimism.
That 80's song with Lord.
Very good.
Waiting on the start of fall.
Okay. Ms. Jessie, are we on another topic? Yes, great. Yes, yeah, we're ready to move.
I was confused on that topic. I want to talk about asked for aviation maintenance program at Woodbridge High School. As you know, Stonewall has a program. We have an after-school program. We were offered a program, but, you know, we made it into an after-school program. I guess my question is, we have been offered an opportunity to have a two-year program during-the-day program from the aviation maintenance program of ANASIS. Are we considering that? If we're not considering that, I would like for us to provide a program for Woodbridge High School.
Ms. Goss?
So, Mrs. Jessie, we absolutely are. We've already outreach to the owner of that business partnership, and that business partner is updating our business partnership agreement and sending that over so that we can send it through legal counsel. And we're going to do everything possible to support the school in standing up that free teacher and elective class in the fall.
I don't get to ask for nothing, another item, but we'll try to get.
Well, you'll have a turn after we move around. Ms., any, any volunteers? Mr. Wilk?
I just, again, I'll make a move, but you can't ask for more if you aren't reallocating the money, like.
No, I know, you call it yourself.
No, no, I was, I was just asking for trade.
A trade, okay.
Well, if you're trading, give us something to remove if you need to.
I got something for you. I got something for you.
All right, good.
I move the, the reallocation to somewhere. The one-time funding for an HR, Fin HR systems consultant for a half million dollars.
So Dr., Mr. Wilk wants to remove the human resource consultant for a half million dollars? Do you want to have someone address that? I don't remember seeing that in the questions. No, I see that in the budget, but that wasn't, do you have someone who can?
Sure.
Mr. Wallingford.
That one's me. So we've been on the same financial and HR systems for about 23, 24, 25 years now. The intention is to go out to the markets, look and see, procure a new system, and have a consultant because this is such a, a critical piece of software for the operation of the school division. We would bring somebody in to help guide the RFP and implementation process of procuring and installing that software.
Could you also speak to the end-of-life that whatever you feel you can legally and publicly share?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Walz. There are some questions. The, the firm that we purchased this software from and have purchased it from for years, have, you know, partnered with for years, is a firm called CGI. They used to be headquartered in Fairfax, Virginia. They're now a Canadian firm. They are the firm who put together the software that the Obama administration used when they implemented Obamacare. Some folks refer to it, right? Just to give you some context on who that firm is, there's some concern about whether that's a product that is viable going into the future. I think that's about all I'll say about that. Without the $500,000, Mr. Wilk, we'd have to either implement ourselves or, in fact, that's not something I'd recommend, or we'd have to drop the project altogether.
Ms. Rawson had a question?
What is it, the amount of this new, excuse me, whatever it was, I'm sorry, was new? Which one? Yes, the H, yeah. I was thinking of the, the plane area, the airplane area? Did you say that?
Let me just clarify. The, the software, the systems that we're looking at replacing are the systems that are used by Prince Room County Schools for financial management and for human resource management and payroll. That's what, that's what we're looking at right now.
Anyone else have a question?
Yes, so just, is 500,000 the ceiling then? You wouldn't expect there to be some, oh, we need some more? Is it, because that's just a round, it looks like a perfectly round number.
It is a perfectly round number. It's an estimate of what we would expect it to cost. It could cost less, it could cost more, but that, that's our best estimate. We actually went out, our procurement staff went out and looked at contracts, and, and that's roughly what we would expect it to cost.
Okay, no surprises then?
No surprises.
Anyone else have a question on this topic? Ms. Ja, Ms. Jackson?
I'm so sorry. I'm still quite confused on what being consultant would do if we're five. 500,000 dollars.
So, implementation of a system like this isn't something that staff does daily or yearly, or many folks, exactly, many folks will spend their whole career working in finance and H R and payroll, never implement a system like this, and so it's a very prudent thing to do, to go out and get folks who do this kind of work on a daily basis to guide us in the procurement and implementation of the software.
So, Mr. Wallingford, if I understand, if I'm understanding correctly, just to clarify, the consultant, we're paying for them for a start to finish, so they assist in looking at different systems, the training and implementation of the systems, and basically to be around in case during implementation or as of use, there would be questions or further training needed, it's a full-scale operation?
That's correct. If I could add one thing-
Absolutely.
Our partners over at McCourt, the county folks, have over the past four or five years implemented their own systems from what came out of a garage. The software they were on was very old, and they did something very similar to this. They went, went out and hired consultants to help implement. They also have auditors come in, there's a lot of extra work that gets done when you implement new systems. It's a, it's a very big deal.
Mr. Wilk?
Just want to point out, it'd be convenient for the county to then say they can't raise the tax rate on us when we have things like this in our budget, but, you know, they clearly do it, as you mentioned, with even more auditing and stuff.
Yeah, unless anyone else has two cents to throw, and I think that this is like a backbone system, because it runs our pay for employees, any H R electronics, because if you remember, I think, maybe it was a year ago, we finally stopped asking everyone to sign paper for their contracts and things of that nature. Again, something the previous board made, implemented the change, because up to about a year ago, we had staff coming annually, it was like annual sign day for signing paper contracts, so I'm, I support this, because I'm always about electronic and modernizing our system, but that's just me, Mr.-
So, one more, just one more thought. The term you hear folks use to refer to these kinds of systems is mission-critical, okay? This is, this is not a trivial piece of software. Everybody who does the kind of work I do, they get nervous when you start talking about this, because it's such a big effort. That's just, no, that's just the cost of the consultants to help do the work.
Anyone else have any further questions or comments before we take under Mr. Wilk's vote?
Man, I, I hear people saying things like 500,000 dollars is not bad. You know, I think that, yeah, I know you did, but I, I just think that consistently, I'm telling you that I'm, I'm getting this, this sense that we may not think it's top-heavy, and I know, Laurie, you don't, but, I know, but when we start saying 500,000 dollars, you have teachers, it's, it's, I'm sorry, it's just that it's something that, it's just bothering me that we're just kind of so cavalier about it.
Mr. Wallingford?
Mrs. Jessie, did I hear you say 500,000 a year? Okay, no, I just wanted to-
500,000 for one year?
This is-
I understand it's an, it's, it's a one-time cost.
Okay, very good, I just, I just misheard you.
I just think we have, it just seemed like we're so cavalier about the amount of money that we're talking about, and I know we don't, the Board of Supervisors does not tell us what to do with our money, but the Board of Supervisors does support us, and the Board of Supervisors, I think, is going out on a limb to give us as much as they can give us, and I think that, I'm not saying this particular project, but I just think we're, we're sort of cavalier about, well, you know, it's not a lot of money, it is a lot of money, and the top, this equity part of this plan in your executive summary, I, I don't think that most of the material, which is not for tonight, is not equity-related, but it sounds good to say it's equity-related, and I think we're, I think we're just asking for negative publicity. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Do, did everyone go around and talk about this? Are we on the consultant still? Okay, do you want to do the vote? Okay, this is, Mr. Wilk is recommending that we remove the consultant from the budget for the one-time cost for H R consultant. So, so, all in favor of removing the H R consultant from the budget? All in favor, how many you got? Four? Okay, how many opposed to removing it from the budget? Four, so what does that mean? So, it stays in the budget, there you go. Ms. Zargarpur? Okay, anybody want to take a stab here? Anybody up next? Ms. Jessie, and, and we'll stick to what's in the budget.
So, I can't ask for an addition. Because I don't know the cost.
Sure, 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 you should ask.
Woodward, yeah, sure. Woodward High School would like to have either a cyber security program or have its, you know, the original program that went to COVID. They'd like for us to reconsider that, that they, they don't see why we can't have two programs, a COVID program, and I'm not sure about the cost, it just came to me, but they have been discussing this for quite some time. They feel that they are not, they don't have as many other programs, additional programs as some of the other schools, so that's, my job is to present that, and I have.
Dr. Walts?
So, we provided the list of specialty programs, every high school has the same number. The reason that was moved is it was a non-central location, and all of the spaces used were not designed for that purpose, and, but we can cer, we'll certainly look at the aviation program. Are either Rita or Ms. Goss or-
Cyber security.
Mr. Mulgrew, are we aware of the, is the principal requesting this, or do we, this is the first I've-
It's from the community. The community gets to make a request also.
I mean, we can certainly, so we can certainly look at that, but I don't think it, oh, of course we can.
Would you at least look into it?
Yes. Cyber security. Ms. Goss, and you don't need to come up, but I just want to make sure you and Mr. Mulgrew understand what I've agreed to. That you will talk to the principal regarding the cybersecurity.
Mr. Wilk has something to add, do you have another motion? He's very animated about, he's got that red marker. Yeah, yeah, okay, let's just, okay, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Jackson?
Okay, in the spirit of reviewing the budget and making sure that we're spending all money-
We love that spirit.
And to support Mr. Wilk's, who is-
Having a heart attack?
I do have a, I want to review-
Getting grayer.
Want to review the transportation customer service advocate for 149,000, and it says it's responsible for supervising dispatch, but who currently is sponsoring, who currently is supervising dispatch, and is this position vital?
So, I'll answer the last question first, and that is, yes, the position is vital, and then I, Mr. Shiroki, where, oh, okay, that's the staff table, but go ahead, bring your chair up. Let me just say that I would invite anyone who's interested in seeing that demonstrated to come up during the first, any day, first few weeks of school, and one of the great things about having Mr. Shiroki is he's been to other places and seen how their transportation systems have significantly higher numbers of people doing this kind of work in much smaller systems, but for him to speak specifically to the need, yes, we're happy to do that.
Currently, we have a customer service advocate who is also a coordinator that supervises those people that you've asked about. What we have found is our customer service advocate has been instrumental in being responsive to parents, schools, anyone who reaches out to transportation, not just before the school year starts and when the school year starts, but throughout the year, and we can tell you that with the shortage, critical shortage of drivers, we have had to be very responsive to our parents as far as communicating and making sure that they're aware of when changes are occurring, and, and this additional position will allow us to be very responsive at getting back to our, our schools and our parents, which expect and should receive timely communication back when there are transportation issues. So, we respectfully request that this position remain in the budget if at all possible.
Actually, I'd rather hear Diane right now.
Mr. Wilk just keeps talking. Ms. Ralston?
Just a moment, please, okay. I was thinking about what, what you're looking at, you know, if we have buses, and we have all kinds of data, and all kinds of people, you know, and maybe they, there's a little bit of money there. I'm still looking for money for light on the third floor of the extension. Are we there? That's my, that's my real want-
Yes.
And my real get.
Yes, that's in there.
Okay, that's really all that matters, thank you.
I think we need to vote on the- Yeah, the bus position.
Well, I don't know if we're done talking about the bus, but, no, no, that's fine.
Well, we were changing subjects.
Oh.
I just wanted to make sure. We look well for this, so I'm, I'm happy.
Excellent. Any other concerns on the, the bus? Mr. Wilk?
I, I just, personally, I know it's important, but one of the big issues with bus drivers is we can't attract enough. I'd much rather take the 149,000 and spread it into bus drivers and increase their salary than hire this position. Sorry.
Let's get a comment on, what are we doing with bus driver salaries this year compared to last year? Dr. Walts or Wallingford?
Yeah, so we, we, first of all, on the scale, we've eliminated step one, so that automatically moves our hiring position up, and then we put in the largest increase in order to do just exactly what you said, using the staffing study that was recommended, and I believe we even added more than that into it. We did, yes. So, 1,375,000 dollars is added into bus drivers.
Sorry, want to clarify, this year, sir?
This coming year, it's in this budget.
Okay.
So, how does that translate in terms of hourly or annual income?
Are you prepared to speak with that, or? Ms. Eagle? If you're not, if you're not prepared to answer it, that's okay, we'll take over.
Yeah, I think it would probably be better if we took the specific question and I got back to you, because I don't want to give misinformation. So, is the specific question, what the entry rate is being proposed, or?
Does that translate in terms of hourly wages and/or annual salary, and what, what does it translate in terms of an increase?
May I try and make an attempt at reframing? Are you asking what increase is going to their pay?
Well, I want to know what is it gonna look like when, what, how will their salaries look different from, with the raise that you have? That's, that's-
The increase is on the lower end of the bus driver scale, where we are not as competitive as the higher end of the scale. So, we are removing steps from the bottom of the scale and starting the entry wages higher, and we'll have a corresponding increase for other individuals that are currently on those steps to move up higher on the scale.
Not nearly as aggressively as this, so this, yeah, we made a change last year, but this has been something that the board has been asking for, for two years in a row. This is a significant, a much more significant change, improvement.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you. So, what is the new starting salary then?
The proposed new starting salary is $21.85 an hour.
And that, do we, do we know, I'm not sure if you know off the top of your head, does that put us at or above Fairfax, or?
Currently, it would place us above all area divisions in terms of starting wage based on their FY '20 wages.
Thank you.
Adele, you have another question? Are we voting on something? Are we voting, or did she have another comment? Okay, so we're voting on the bus position to, we're voting to remove the bus position from the proposed budget. So, who would like to, so all in favor of removing the bus position from the proposed budget, say aye. Customer service. So, removing, so who's in favor of removing the transportation services advocate? Okay, so one, two, three, five, five, four, any up- And two upstations. Ralston and Wall. Okay, another question? Who wants to go next, anybody else? Mr. Wilk? Oh.
I'm waiting for someone else to step up.
Okay, Ms. Zargarpur?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can I clarify something? Mrs. Wall voted yes to remove it.
Sorry, Ms. Wall voted yes. Sorry, I didn't see the hand.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Six to two, Mr. Wilk, please. So, what's the total? Five yes, and?
Six yes.
Five.
One abstain and one no.
Kim, Ms. Zargarpur?
So, I just want to understand why we need a floating bookkeeper. That, because I don't think anyone asked the question, so I would like to know how that's in.
So, I'll make a start on this, and then if Mr. Wallingford feels the need to add more. So, like any other person in the school system, money is of critical importance and the handling of that money, the bookkeeping for that money, all the entry, everything that's responsible. In addition, there is a plethora of auditing tasks that go on, and you better account for everything correctly, because there are ongoing audits. So, the problem is, when we have, let's say we have several new bookkeepers, I don't know how many we get in a given year, but let's say it's five, we need someone to go around and work with them. Let's say we have a bookkeeper that is out for six weeks, or six, six months to have a child. We need to be able to get a person in there that knows what they're doing, and again, this is something that most school systems, this is just common practice.
Yes, well, well done, Dr. Walts, thank you.
So, then, I think what's frustrating me here is, going back to my chronically underfunded comment from earlier, it, it seems to me that trying to sort of shift money around so we can pay TAs or find more money for kindergarten assistance, or get more TAs in special education, find more bus drivers, all of these things that we're talking about special education, find more bus drivers, all of these things that we're talking about that we can always use more of. And my brain was going, if I'm going to try to shift money to make those positions better paying and, and more of, and more of them, I, my mind was going, I'm going to have to find some money that maybe we can hold back on a position. But now I'm starting to wonder if, if maybe we need more people like people who are in the Board of County Supervisors actually, I don't know, maybe they should sign up and be substitutes or something so they can see what, how it, don't laugh, I'm serious actually. Be substitutes. Go in and, and do that job that we are so, we need. We need these assistants. We need all of these things. And I think my mindset was more of a, let me see if I can just sort of shift, help shift some things around and, and do a little bit better inside our classrooms. And it is appearing that everything's critical. Thank you for answering that question. So I think my biggest ask is we, we need to fund our schools. Hashtag fund our schools.
Okay. Excellent. All right. So there was no vote there, nothing to vote on. Okay. Outstanding. Excellent. Good work. And I think we're starting to get to the end here. Ms. Jesse? Well, I mean, I've asked you.
I want, I just want an explanation of why our, the attorney cost is $238,000. Is that an average salary or, you know, I know how the budget works, but for incoming attorney, are we looking for someone with more experience or certain type of attorney? It just seems like an awful lot of money.
So I, remind, I think all those numbers include salary and benefits.
That's correct. It's average salary and benefits at that grade.
What's the average salary and benefit for a teacher?
The average salary and bene, benefits for a teacher is about $93,000. That includes benefits.
I, you know, again, I just think we're talking about a lot of money.
Ms. Jesse, are you making a motion to remove that?
No, I'm not making a motion to remove that, but I, I would like to see if we could get someone to support just for the board. And I'm thinking not maybe a salary position, but maybe someone on temporary assignment or something of that nature or, because I think Ms. Ralston once said that we need a board attorney. We need someone to support us, and I'm not sure what that should look like. So maybe, maybe you have some suggestions, budget. Miss, maybe you could give us some suggestions on that. I just think that there's, we've had some situations and I just think we need to have someone that is, that's catering to the board.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. McGowan?
I have a contract as the board attorney. Remind you, my client is the board and I have been representing the board faithfully and continue to do so.
So I appreciate that. And so what we'll do is.
I don't think that that's accurate, but I would, because the individual board members have situations that I think need to be addressed, maybe it's something that we need to discuss later, but I don't agree with them.
Okay. So let me just, since we're on the topic in discussion of attorneys and BLCS tonight, I brought this up last year. We have a $1.6 billion budget. We oversee 12,000 employees and 91,000 students. The Board of County Supervisors has a lot of responsibilities as well, and they're about a $1.3 billion budget, Mr. Wallingford. Police, fire, lots of roads and things they have to do. We have currently two attorneys working for the school division. The Prince William County Board of County Supervisors has 17 attorneys. Seventeen attorneys. So I take umbrage with the criticism of top-heavy. Fairfax County, which is twice our size, has four or five attorneys currently and spends an enormous amount on external counsel. And so Fairfax is twice our size. And so we, this position I did put in there and recommend, we have some issues in compliance and oversight, and I think bringing on more attorneys are very good for compliance and oversight and good, good employment law. So anyways, move on. Mr. Wilk?
Yes.
He's fired up to go next.
Why not? I move that we eliminate the $450,000 for the increased support for the aqua, Aquatic Center.
Do you want to have somebody come up and tell us what the 450,000? Oh, no, Dr. Walts.
Well, I'll, I'll start off with that. So again, if we remove that funding, we would have to shut down many of the things that we're doing over there. For example, the whole water safety program, which is one of the biggest selling points, would have to shut down. The only way we can make up for that kind of revenue is to free it up for rental and which, you know, it was never designed to be completely self-funded. The other thing is if you, and again, I'm an equal opportunity supporter for athletics, but if you take the cost of a stadium and how that has to be supplemented for very limited use, the pool is open seven days a week and many hours a day, and I actually think that's a small price to pay in addition to what they're able to raise. I would be, I would be very concerned about that.
Dr. Walts, can you explain a little bit more detail, like why the $450,000? Where did that number come from? I'll let Mr. Wallingford.
So, excuse me, the $450,000 is a number that happens whether we budget it or not. The, the cost to operate the aquatic center is roughly a million, roughly a million dollars. We transfer, we've budgeted, this board has budgeted, and we've transferred in about $400,000 a year over the past several years. The first year we opened the aquatic center, we actually transferred in $500,000 a year. The aquatic center cannot support itself based on revenues generated outside the school division. So whether we put it in the budget or not, if we leave the aquatic center open at the current operation, it will cost us, again, I can get the precise number, but about a million dollars a year. All this does, and, and I apologize before I say this, okay, this is an accounting issue. All this budgeting of the $450,000 does is it allows us to transfer more money into the aquatic center fund, the accounting mechanism that we use to track the aquatic center. If we don't do it and we maintain the current operation, the aquatic center fund will actually go into a deficit position, and that's not something we can allow to happen. So if this board decides not to fund that additional $450,000, it won't generate other conversation that we would have to have.
Is it, am I misunderstanding? Was there some discussion that the aquatic center would become self-sufficient at some point?
That never came from the administration.
Okay.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, that's a, you know, been a topic of conversation over the past year, and I, I specifically contacted Mr. Klein, who I worked for for 25 years, to have that conversation. That is not something that anybody in this administration ever said, that's, that it would be self-supporting.
This is a large cost. I have to tell you that the aquatic center has provided opportunities for kids to, to practice at hours that were not crazy. It has provided an opportunity for students from lower-income families to get lessons, swim lessons, which they would never be able to get. It has also opportu, provided opportunities for special ed students to get therapy, and I think we have the center. And I, all night, I've been talking about top-heavy, top-heavy, but I think when it comes, this to me, comes to kids. And I think that I, I was there a couple of weeks ago for a competition, and a former member of the board, Mrs. O'Toole's granddaughter was swimming, and she came to me and said, I just want to thank you guys for this center. I, I am amazed at the amount of, the, the, the number of programs and projects and how well this center runs. So I'm not sure I'm doing the right thing, but I'm not going to support you on this, but you're still my friend.
Mr., Dr. Walts?
So another way of saying this is it's funding the division expenses. And I'll just give you one more example. In addition to Mrs. Jesse's example of the fact that people were going, kids were driving, parents were driving at outrageous times of the day to get lane time, we were able to get almost every team in the school division lane time over there. So again, it's funding the program expenses. In addition, there was at least one high school where parents were paying approximately $400 per child to be on the swim team, which again, you talk about an equity issue, and we cut that in half.
They got the underwater.
And we had no place for, they would do their practice runs in horse tanks.
Mr. Wilk?
I pulled a vote.
Okay. All right. So I, I was, so before you were going to pull the vote, I was going to have my sort of soliloquy on it.
I, well, judging from five, six years ago, I think I know where you're going to stand.
All right. Well, just, just for the record, and I like to put a fine point on this, and I've said this, you know, numerous places throughout the last couple of years, campaigning, talking to reporters, but if we had a line item that showed each football stadium for our 12 high schools and how much revenue they generated on ticket sales for home games, and what the cost is to run that stadium, light that stadium, cut the grass in the stadium, maintain the stadium, the cost it was used to acquire the land for that stadium, the current cost for maintaining it, I would suspect that we would be running a major deficit on each of our stadiums. Now, those aren't put in as line items because those are built into the site-based budget, but those stadiums don't generate a lot of revenue, but culturally, we as a society believe very strongly that we ought to have a football stadium at every school. That's a lot of land. We could put an elementary school on every football field. We can fit one. So we can put 12 schools there. We don't have to acquire any property, but that's not what we as a society, I think, would, would do. I think if you look at the swimming pool and the cost it generates to, to, to keep that thing going, whether we paid for it or the county decided to build a pool, I suspect the Chin Center and the Dale City Rec Center cost, and it may not be profitable, I'm not sure, but we would have, you know, spent money using those pools and having a school. So if we look at the county as one, one county, we're sharing in the cost of things that benefit the entire county and our schools. We would absorb those costs one way or the other, whether we're sending our, our folks out there. So I believe strongly, and I, and I'm going to take this moment to tell everyone about, you know, if we're going to fund football stadiums, and, and, and I love football, you know, I'm from where, when, when we grew up, the high school stadium would have five to 10,000 people in it on Friday night. We generated a profit. So that's Western Pennsylvania, Northeast Ohio, Michigan, same. But we don't generate those ticket sales here. And so it's a different, to different place. So if you had a line item, I'd like to see that next year with a line item with the stadium so we can have this discussion. But I think I would support keeping and maintaining what we have currently. This was, you know, built a long time, you know, a while ago now, but I will continue to support funding it.
My only response is this is I, with, I find it just frustrating going to the self-sufficiency of the argument we heard over and over again years ago, and it may not have come from administration, but no one dispelled that from administration when people were saying that in advocacy of the pool. And I get it, it's a public campaign, we want to get people out to support things like that, but that was something heard repeatedly, that this would be self-sustaining eventually, and I don't think it's heading in that direction. I'm willing to support, and now pulling it, I don't think there's the votes there. I don't want the program to shut down. I just, I'm a little perplexed about, you know, putting 400, 450, $500,000 into this from our end of year. That's just my position on that.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you for being willing to pull it. Just on behalf of the pool, it was one of the first votes that I took when I was first seated on the board. I will, as long as I remain a representative of the Woodbridge District, will always support the pool. Without it, my, no one in my district can swim ever in the winter. And as it stands now, my district, I can't even swim in my own district in the summer sometimes if I don't get to the pool by 10:30 and have $5 per head of however many may be joining me to swim. So I can't say enough for what it does for my district, and I think maybe while it's not funded as a fully funded or self-supporting fully funded dollar-wise, the value that it gives to the residents of my district will always outweigh the money spent because we're talking about children who would never set foot in a pool, whether it's an, an economic issue or just simply for the lack of pool period in my district. So I will always support this and as I had from, from the very beginning and growing up here in this county and watching my friends get up at 2:00 in the morning and 3:00 in the morning, and then seeing their kids get up at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning and having to listen to the county say that they were going to build pools and it never happened. Now they get an extra two or three hours sleep because they can get up at like 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning. So I think it, when it may not pay for itself financially, it pays for itself in a variety of other ways.
Okay.
One last.
Dr. Walts?
Just one last remark again. The 400K supports, that supports our division programs.
Thank you. Okay, next. Anybody have a hand up? Okay, Mr. Wilk, I think we're sort of getting towards the, even while you're looking, I, you know, I, I haven't brought up a whole lot. I'm, you know, worked very hard with Superintendent, his staff, all of you all, and I'm very happy with the, you know, what we have up on the screen there. I think this budget, again, as you guys are looking at this, really addresses, you know, the, the salary structure for the schools, especially since we haven't gotten a whole lot for salaries from the state this year. We made a big commitment for that, so it's a large part of our budget, close to $50 million, which is not posted up there, but in the budget, in the executive summary, you'll see about $50 million is going towards salary plus. Dr., Mr. Wilk?
Since we haven't really freed up a lot of money, my ask of the board is to make the family resource, Military Family Resource Officer, once that grant runs out, it goes to a .5 FTE. I'd like the board to make it a full position in that position. It's a .5 for next fiscal year, the Military Family Resource Officer.
So that's considered a part-time job now? You want to make it a full-time?
I want to make it a full position.
All in favor? Aye.
Is that everyone?
Consolation prize.
Who, could I get the votes, please, Mr. Chairman?
All in favor?
Lori, you're a no. You're abstaining.
So I do have one that I'd like to say, since we've made some, you know, reallocations or there's some money freed up, I would ask that, and this would be an increase, and I know Mr. Wilk is all sort of in a bunch on increasing, but the increasing the tuition reimbursement, it's at 150, 149,742. I, you know, one question is, are we using that each year? Are we maximizing that? Or is that, is that hitting its cap every year?
Yes.
So I, I would love to see that doubled if we could do that. That's the professional development tuition reimbursement for teachers going for extra degrees. Is that correct?
Yes.
So if we can find some funding from some of the things we've removed to increase the tuition reimbursement, I would ask.
Two items.
Huh?
What was the total that we moved?
428,031.
We removed a couple of positions. We got rid of the bus guy.
428,031.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we had the military family person back in there, I'm guessing that's roughly So that would, that would, yes, you could, you could put another 150,000 in there.
Yeah. So this is from things we, we removed earlier, so I would like to recommend that, and if, happy to hear any thoughts. Ms. Jesse?
I was going for another item, but I'll.
Okay. Ms. Ralston? Okay. Ms. Williams? Okay. Ms. Jackson?
I was just reviewing the staffing ratios for teacher assistants and classroom teachers that I got from Mrs. Hubner, and I was just wondering if there is a way to maybe consider with any of the extent to hire more TAs.
So actually, I'm sorry, we, we still have to vote on the. So, actually, I'm sorry, we still have to vote on the, where's that money?
The increasing tuition reimbursement for.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so preoccupied with.
No, that's okay. That's all right. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I support you.
Wow. Okay. All in, all in favor of increasing the tuition reimbursement, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. I think Ms. Jackson was next.
What I just said, I'm so sorry.
I have a question.
Yeah, Ms. Williams?
Ms. Jackson, are you referring to your TAs all across the board increase? Because I was earlier asking for increase in kindergarten, or is it specific?
Specifically special education.
So, let me find that. In this budget right now, we have added $2,322,86. So, my only concern about starting to add more TAs is we're, I mean, we could probably add, are you doing the math there?
I just wanted to know the math. It's just because I know we've cut some things, and I am concerned about the ratio compared to other counties, so I just wanted to know where we were at.
So, right now, the 428, did you back out the one?
We're at about $250,000.
Left?
Correct.
I get, okay.
It's, we have 250, we have 100.
So, how many TAs would that buy?
We'll have to do the precise math, 3, 6, 12, more, about eight.
Put it?
Yeah, there were 35.
Salary and benefits, special ed.
Kathleen, do you have a TA cost per salary and benefits?
34.
That's what I thought, 35. That's with benefits? 35.
Okay. So, how many more could we add with the balance of that money?
I've got 7.14, seven.
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 Yes.
Seven, that's correct.
Okay. So, I guess I would ask, Ms. Heubner, would you support that movement? Because I know that we're hiring 50, I understand that, and we're switching some from temp to full-time, so I'm just wondering if we hire additional people that would be able to hire more people from temp to full-time, you know, making more access to benefits.
The calculation that we just did is full-time, not temporary TAs. Okay, just, I just wanted to be clear, and we could add about seven of those.
So, that would, that would use the rest of the money, that we would be balanced as of today. The budget would be balanced.
Just to consider, I'm not making a movement.
Oh, you're not making a move?
I won't, I would like the input from the rest of the board.
Where's the money?
Aye.
Well, hold on, we're still taking the discussion on the TAs. Do you have a, talk about the TAs, Lilly?
No.
Oh, Mr. Wilk?
You know, there was a point to all my stuff and my madness tonight. I really was hoping that we could give the TAs a decent, a sizable raise, so adding seven more, to me, it's not really fixing the problem to me at this point. So, it's not that I don't support it, it just, it wasn't, it wasn't kind of where I wanted to end up, but it's fine.
The TAs are getting a 4.8% raise, but you wanted, how much did you?
I wanted 12.
12%.
Yes.
Did we, did we get numbers on that in the review packet? Ms. Wall, I think we did, right? How much was that? Remind me.
I was going to say 700,000, yeah.
And that would be a 12% raise for all TAs across the board?
Yes.
Is that what that cost would be?
Yeah. Yeah, but I can't, I'm looking for the money. Do we have any other suggestions for that money?
So, one thought, so if, let's take a poll here. Well, Dr. Walz.
Yes, I just want to say, you know, if that's what the board wants to do to round things out, there's another way to look at it, and that is, right now, what you're, what we're trying to improve upon is bringing contracted people, not even a contractor, basically daily, daily subs without, or not subs, but temporary employees without benefits. So, what you'd be doing is giving seven more people a full-time job with benefits. So, I mean, speaking to Mr. Wilk's point, that's, that's an improvement.
No, I see that. I agree with you, sir. I mean, that's an improvement, it's, yeah.
So, I think we should, we should, we have a couple of things, well, do you want to talk about the TA?
Yeah, I, I'm, I see people standing in the back, and I need to know why they're, are they standing for additional raise, or are they, are they standing for the raise?
I think they want the 12%.
Raise versus positions?
Well, no, I don't, I think, so I think they're two different issues, right? So, I think your idea of getting seven extra positions, you're trying to take some of the money that we removed earlier, reallocate that. That's where they came up with the seven spots to full-time, to go to full-time.
Knowing that they're being paid temp, yes.
Yes, to increase. That's one thing. Mr. Wilk had mentioned at the last work session that we wanted to do a general increase of more than 4.8% raise to them and go 12%, because he felt like that was more fair. And so, that's two separate issues. I think we vote on Ms. Jackson's issue first. Let's do that. Well, we, let's do that first.
To be, to be fair to.
Because you're not asking.
To Mr. Wallingford, I don't know if we have 750, yeah, we're, yeah, some, there was a method to my madness, but I just played Ted Cruz tonight, so way better looking, but.
So, one thought is to, yes, Ms. Williams?
What is the vacancy rate currently for those TAs? Is there, do we have an issue with that?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Walz.
So, while Ms. Heubner is getting into position here to speak to the matter, let me just say that I think that's something else that we could look at with our compensation specialists and see what other districts are doing and see how we do in terms of filling the, well, if we get all of our money, whatever number of positions that was, 50.
It's about 50, yeah.
To see if we can get those folks, but it's something that we could do with our compensation specialists if that's what Mr. Wilk is interested in.
So, good, so.
Correct.
Yeah, Ms. Heubner.
So, I can't give a specific consistent number because it does fluctuate from day to day, week to week, depending on the number that have been approved or the number that are currently in the position, and then find alternative employment or become contracted TAs based on availability. The last time that Michelle and I looked at it, it was somewhere around the 40 to 50 that we had approved positions for, but we weren't able to find people to fill consistently. But again, that does vary from day to day. It may by the end of the year be more or less, just depending on the needs in the classroom. We reevaluate the temporary teaching assistance every 30 days, so there's a requirement that the school continue to need the temporary teaching assistant because they're applied for based on need. So, the number that you have at the start of the year is not the same that you have in the middle or at the end.
I have one more question.
Yes.
So, Mr. Wallingford, if we didn't do the seven, what, how much of an increase would be generated, like, would it be a percent or a half a percent instead of turning those positions into full-time positions, and we gave it for the wages?
We need.
Estimate. I'm not, I'm not holding you to the fire with your exact.
I'm not going to do that math here in front of you. We'd have to, we'd have to go back and sit down. It's not a big problem, but I don't want to do math here in front of the, in front of the board.
Please, please. We need a break.
So, to move this along, one thought would be, next time, Mr. Wilk, when you want to reallocate monies to something you have in mind there towards the end, we could do it all in one package. One thing to think about, one thing to think, so, meaning you want to make these cuts because you want to get the money, raise the money for the other thing, right? Yeah, no, I get it, but we can.
I have more, we can.
So, let's, let's vote on Ms. Jackson's, one other thought to do is that we haven't addressed the digital equity thing, which has been sort of, you know, bounced around quite a bit in discussions, and the 700,000 that we need to go to 12%, and I know the digital equity is a one-time funding, but one thought is use that one-time funding for the 12% salary raise this year, and I know we don't like to do it, but we would then move to find ways to put that in the baseline budget moving forward each year. That's one thought to think about as.
So, if we go back and think about what had happened, and now we're going to possibly bring digital equity up. Is it possible that people then would have probably cut earlier things than cut the digital equity? You see what I'm saying with the logic?
No, no, I mean, well, we haven't addressed digital equity, but if you're looking for money later on, I mean, that was going to come up anyways, but I thought, yeah, I've been asking questions about it all the time, but yeah.
So, we just voting on hers, or you pulling it?
Well, I also am looking to give them a raise, so I'm concerned that if I say this, then we won't, they won't get the raise, so.
How much money was it that she's, what's, what's her money?
Additional, because it's.
What was her money that you calculated for the seven positions?
$250,000.
It's only 250, so we need to find another 500 more. Right? Is that right?
So, could I pull something and come back to it? Is that, would that be kosher?
Sure.
So, the compensation study, that's on hold then, or? I mean, again, I'm, I'm a little concerned about just coming in and automatically giving a group something that we haven't looked at appropriately.
I agree with you. I mean, it's good that, how long would that compensate? I'm sorry, sir, how long would that?
Before the next budget. No, budget season.
Next budget meeting.
For the next budget meeting?
No, budget.
Next year?
Yes.
No, I mean, like I said, I stand with wanting the 12, but I don't think, again, we're at a point to find that money right now. I mean, I wanted one day to have the teacher steps repaid. I don't think we're at that moment right now, so, you know, this is kind of where we're at, so it's not, you know, it is what it is.
What, what would it cost to double at 8%? I know he's stuck at 12. 8% increase, a double.
It'd be about 375, 350, 350, 400, about 400.
It's a sweat. It's 375.
Yeah, it's half of the 750, around about.
I move that we look at 8%. I, I just think that, okay, I think.
Why don't we, why don't we do this? Let's take a 10-minute break because we've been at it for this for a while. Everyone use the restroom, and then we'll be back in 10 minutes. Okay? Thank you. Okay, we'll reconvene. Mr. Wilk?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move that we reallocate some funding after speaking with a number of my principals and site-based budgets and how they're able to have, most cases, additional funds to do things like innovative programs and implement them at their school. I'm going to move that we cut that back from 500,000 to 250,000, saving us an additional 250K for innovative programs.
Where is that line item? Which project are you saying?
It's called innovative programs. It's currently budgeted for a half million dollars.
What happened to the 12%?
Where we move, we got to find how to fund that, Lilly.
He wants to find money. Where is that, Justin? What part of the budget?
The H-27.
Of the executive summary, or you?
The H-27 executive summary, summary, third line down, innovative programs.
Okay. My motion is to scale it from, reduce it, thank you. I don't know what evil words I'm using. Scale it back, cut it in half.
Okay. What is innovative programs? Is there something specific on those?
So, you may recall, you organized a Saturday retreat, and a number of people were brought in, and one of those folks was the education person from Amazon who recommended that we set aside millions of dollars for innovative programs to spur creativity and, you know, we'll have a maker's space in one school, and there's a lot of different innovations that go on. The problem is usually getting funding. A lot of, especially the elementary schools, don't get the funding. Well, he suggested, I think if I remember correctly, it was set aside 5% off the top of the budget, which would be millions. So, I thought we could at least start a few, have a few dollars by putting a half a million.
So, up or down on Justin's recommendation to cut that to half? Any other thoughts? Okay. All in favor of dropping that to half? Aye. Okay. All opposed? One. Okay.
So, innovative programs, 250.
Ms. Jesse, did you have something you wanted to talk about earlier about the cut?
The professional learning. As we look at this whole equity program, I really was thinking about an equity audit, but I'm not going to go there because I don't know what it costs, but I would like to increase the amount for professional learning because I think it's important that as we look at programs at work, our staff needs to have opportunities to go on-site visits and visit other locations. I think there's a program in Georgia, there are programs in, yes, everywhere, and I would like for us to do some outside learning, and I don't know, I'm, I'm thinking 50, another 50,000, but I don't, I'm not married to that. Does that make sense, Dr. Walz?
You could take a lot of good numbers.
Okay. So, any discussion? Vote?
Can I make an amendment?
Sure, Mr. Wilk, you're free to say whatever you like.
Take my money, are you?
Yeah, one, I, I guess, I thought we were cutting things to pay for some stuff we already talked about, but understanding this is important to you, Ms. Jesse, could we go to like scale it to an additional 30,000 instead of 50 for professional development? I thought I was making room for something else, but maybe I misunderstood.
Professional development is the most important thing that we do.
I don't disagree with you.
And I, 50,000 doesn't, it's like a small amount compared to 500. But I think that professional development is, is really important as we're looking at this equity committee. There are places where they have equity programs. You have to go see these programs. There are places where they've closed the gap throughout the United States, and I think we need to, we say we're world-class, I think we need to travel. So, could we just vote on 50?
Let's vote on Ms. Jesse's increased equity or professional learning to 100, so just increasing another 50. All in favor?
Increasing it by 50.
By 50 to 100. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Wilk, let's wrap up your stuff that you're trying to do.
Because, because now you have 200 left.
Yeah, I know. Let's go.
I'm going to make an ask. This is more with the CIP. I have a building that was built in 1963, and I personally think the residents of Dumfries deserve more consideration when it comes to some issues. And this building was flagged by Dave Klein's committee for the whole looking at equity and buildings and such like that on the Facility Infrastructure Task Force, so, and.
Which building?
Grand Park, sorry. I would like to move Grand Park up an additional three years on the CIP for its renovations and facilities and programs, renovations for the facilities, sorry. Some things I've heard from staff, from actually admin, poor air conditioning units during the hot summertime, leaky roofs, outdated sinks, toilets, poor quality. These are some areas, again, if we're going to talk about equity, and I fully support the three older high schools and the renovations that are looking at that down the road in the CIP. So, I ask my board for more consideration. I do appreciate Mr. Soroki and that team already putting it five years out, but I would like to escalate it and move it three up, additional three years, again, to better support the facility and infrastructure of Grand Park.
Mr. Wilk, in order for us to consider your request, we would have to go back and reevaluate the entire CIP to look at the debt capacity for each of those years and then bring a recommendation back through Dr. Walz.
Okay.
Is that... I'm confused by that because four years ago, I was able to move something up considerably. And I also was able to get Mary Williams' auxiliary gym like three years earlier without this going back and stuff like that. So you're saying board action tonight can't do anything about that? And yeah?
Well, we have a proposed five-year CIP, and we've hit the debt capacity for the most part for each of those five years. So in order to move a project ahead, we'd have to identify projects of similar value that would have to be moved back to year five of where Grand Park is. If you were to move Grand Park into year two of the CIP, if you're asking for three years. So something that's, first thing I would say is something into year two of the CIP that equals...
Tell them what those are.
Yeah, that equals that amount. We have two elementary renovations, Bristow Run Elementary School and Signal Hill Elementary School. Those projects, if those were to be moved, say, to year five and move Grand Park into year two, something like that more than likely could be accomplished.
Both of them would have to move?
They would both have to move to equal the value of a middle school renovation. Yes.
Okay. I'm going to make that proposal then. You guys can vote it up or down. So move Grand Park up and flip the other two out to the outside of that.
Where is the expansion for the Kelly Building? Is that in the five-year? Where is that in the year?
It's seven years out.
That's seven years out. So that wouldn't have any effect.
What Mr. Siroki was saying was in order for me to move Grand Park up to where I want for three years, we'd have to potentially, he's saying, to find that and bump two elementary schools back to move Grand Park ahead of it, correct?
Correct. So that they're equal, of equal value.
You mentioned Signal Hill. I would like to talk to that community first.
Yeah. I used that as an example for what was proposed. Moving it three years ahead would put it into year two, and those are the only two projects that equal that amount that we would consider, at least with the first run. So again, information only.
I think that's very difficult to do that with no representation from those schools at this late moment. Is there a way to just move his program without moving someone? No.
Not for a project of that value. I would say probably in years past, when there've been smaller projects, the debt capacity may have allowed that. But for renovation of a middle school is very substantial in cost.
If you had a week's time, can you find a way to do any magic with keeping the schools there, adding the middle school, moving it up? Is there any way to do that? There's no way to do that?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So all right. Mr. Wilk would like a vote on to move Grand Park ahead of two elementary schools? Is that right? The renovations?
Yes.
Okay. And these, okay. So all in favor of moving CIP up for Grand Park and potentially moving two elementary schools backwards? All in favor of that, say aye. Okay. All opposed? Next. Ms. Jesse.
I have the wonderful opportunity to recommend the removal of one-time funding for Destination Dance. It's $185,000.
Okay.
This one.
Says 185?
185.
All in favor? Oh, Ms. Dr. Walz.
So we're funding that with one-time money now. So we would be cutting all of that, including the Woodbridge Dance program would be affected, just so you know.
What are the schools involved in that?
Well, it's, the two primary schools that teach dance are Colgan and Woodbridge. And then there's a desire to start it up at Battlefield. They just have a space problem for one year, but they're wanting to start that up. But it's also any number of other things that we fund. So those things will either be canceled or... Because again, what we're expensing now is 90,000 each year with one-time money.
Is there any type of specific allocation out of that money? How much goes to Woodbridge out of the 185?
I mean, we would have to research all that.
She's pulling it. Are you pulling it?
I'm reluctantly pulling it. I'm just...
I think in the information packet, there might be, if it isn't, just get some detail on the actual, the line item on the 180, where it's all going, so everyone knows.
Because I really did not, you know, I've been to the dance program over at Colgan, and I love it. And Woodbridge High School does a great deal. But I did not understand that somehow when we were discussing it. But I will pull it. I can't, I can't take dance from Woodbridge High School or from Colgan.
Ms. Walz.
So I was wondering, and help me understand this, if something like Destination Dance, is that something that could be funded through our innovative programs money? Or is it totally a different kind of thing?
Well, again, the innovative programs were such a small amount of seed money. So for example, if we took from that, that would affect another one of your schools, Ms. Jesse, because Bel Air's program, their participate program will be funded through the innovative grants next year.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we eliminate or reallocate the Guidance Counselor Coordinator at the student service level for $140,756 and remove that position. I've spoken to many counselors throughout the county and asked, do you need additional supervision for support? And that's one of the, not their top priorities. So I would much rather use that money for other programs, like allocating a certain amount of money per site base to bring and implement SEL programs and stuff like that versus the overhead of a Guidance Counselor Director.
What is that position going to do?
Yeah. So we'll bring up Director Slater. And again, this is far more than a supervision. So I'd like her to explain the intent behind this because I think, given the mental health issues and what we're trying to do with the training components and all of these additional counselors that we put in the budget, if you could address, please. And Denise, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So this position, you said the coordinator position, the one that was titled Guidance Counselor Coordinator? I just want to clarify.
I'm sorry, Ms. Slater. The 250-day Grade 13 position, yeah.
Okay. So that, that position is supporting our school counseling programs, K to 12, with programming and services that we frankly have not done before. And it is this year just starting to plant the seeds of that. So as far as the impact on people in the schools, you know, hopefully they're starting to feel that. But we're talking about a position that's supporting our career in college programming, the lessons that we teach K to 12, monitoring school counseling programs at a level that we had not been able to do before. So services we haven't had now exist because of that position and continued funding of it would allow us to keep up with those services.
Could you also please speak to the mental health aspects of that? And Denise, I don't know if you want to add, but...
So...
And the training component, please.
So, you know, we've been able to, because of that position, really add a lot of training and support for mental health, not just for our school-based mental health professionals, but also for laypeople in the schools, for teachers and things like that. So an example would be the initiatives that that position has helped to spearhead with adverse childhood experiences and trauma-informed care, which is something that we are really getting ready to sort of blow out of the water and do a lot of training across the division. That's something we have not been able to do in the past because we have not had enough central positions to be able to oversee those activities. And now that's happening. It's already started this school year. So that would be an example of something that's supporting student mental health.
I think another aspect is an example of what's going on right now. At the start of this week, I expressed a need to student services that we needed some support with curriculum based on the pandemic situation that we're facing. And from Monday to Wednesday, the team created lessons for every grade level that were differentiated, frequently asked questions, how to talk to your children about disease and health and things like that, and supported and created those, allowing the counselors, you know, the supervisors currently, to continue the work that they're doing supporting. But this extra individual was critical. We've also shared those resources out at a national platform and received a lot of really positive feedback. So this is someone who's not only just supporting the work that we're already doing, but allows us to do the extra things that we're focusing on in the development of the five-year plan that we shared out in the last week's board information items.
Ms. Williams.
Does this person do, you said, you mentioned for curriculum. Are they key and integral in professional development or training for counselors and recommending? You know, we have the, a low minority rate in our AP other coursework, depending on where you are in the county. Are they working with counselors to recognize and how to put students in those classes from those groups?
So because...
Is that need being addressed?
Absolutely. Because this is a new position for us, it is still evolving in that way. But exactly what you're saying, looking at, you know, access to advanced coursework, to programs, and educating counselors about that, that would be right up the alley of what this position would continue to do. And what in the past, as you know, I was previously the supervisor that was in this role, we were carrying that all on the shoulders of two people. We now have a third person to be able to step up that type of professional development, to dig into the data a little bit more, to see, you know, where are our patterns, where are our trends? How can we best support counselors so they can best support the students?
And our secondary supervisor supports not just high school, but also middle school. So two different levels for one person.
All in favor of, okay, all in favor of removing the counselor from the budget, the counselor supervisor?
This year.
This year? This year. Vote aye.
What are we doing? Remove...
The counselor, counselor supervision. So Justin Wilk would like to have that position removed from the budget for this year.
Now, what would the cost look like to bring them back?
Well, it would be presumably the same as what it is for this year, maybe a little bit more. What is, what is the price tag on it, Mr. Wilk? On the position?
$114,000.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of removing it from the budget this year?
Yes.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Wilk, I have actually some more, just clarity. Mr. Wallingford? No, it's okay, sir. It's getting late. I'm almost done because I feel like this is futile. I wanted to know, I think we asked, and they may have, honestly, I didn't read round six of questions yet because they came pretty close to the start here. Yeah, did. And I appreciate everyone's work doing that, and I'm sure that was a tight deadline. So thank you for all that, and I think the public will be happy to see those as well. My question, just for validation, I've been asking, is there funding in the current budget for a full-time resource position for the special education in the Kelly Building?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Agapour.
I'm not suggesting a cut. I just want to know. I want to know what the... Well, I don't, I don't know what this is, and I don't know, so do we currently have this? It's the Facility Services Senior GIS Analyst? What is that? Do we have one? Or do we need one and why?
Hi. Good evening. Dave Beavers with Facility Services. This is a position that we already have. The person's on board, and yeah, this is helping us to further enhance our abilities with the boundary process, the mapping we do for that. I think we've enhanced the public-facing end of, I don't know if you've seen our story maps and that, that work that we've done. It's quite nice, and it helps folks to see how the boundaries will impact them, so.
So just to make sure there's an understanding, this was something that the board wanted in last year's budget work sessions. They wanted an additional person to do all these different things. So that person has already been hired. Yeah.
So while they're thinking about it, can you just clarify, Mr. Wallingford for me or Dr. Walz, the digital equity piece? There was some concern about that being, it's a computer refresh, and then we had a discussion here last time about it being one-to-one. You know, what is it really and what's the sort of breakdown there? And it's a one-time cost that we do every year.
Mr. Gilfoyle.
So let me unpack a few of your questions there. So first and foremost, it is one and the same in terms of technology refresh and digital equity. Our goal is to take what we have done traditionally and called technology refresh and simply try to be more strategic about it. So traditionally, the approach has been to take whatever funds were sort of available at the end of the year in tight-budget years that have happened for almost a decade. At the end of the year, there was an opportunity to take what funds were sort of the, left at the end of the year and be able to apply that to one-time funding to be able to actually buy devices, which is a great opportunity from a one-time standpoint because it's literally one-time, you have to purchase that item. The, our goal is to take what we have done traditionally with the technology refresh and actually be a little more strategic about it. Sort of our peanut butter approach has not worked. And what that means is that we just continue to fall behind more slowly. So if you see some of the charts that were provided in the budget questions, you can see that the investments that we have merely, they don't actually even get us ahead, we just continue to fall behind more slowly in terms of the age of our computers and the types of computers that our students have access to, which means that if a principal, which I should mention that in a survey of principals about who might want to be in a digital equity pilot, just in the pilot alone, I had 67 principals say they immediately want to sign up and be in it for next year. So just to give you a sense of the pent-up demand and the interest in it. The challenge is that our, if we don't fund this, the schools then have to fund it if they believe it's important to their school. And of course, as we all know, the allocation, there's lots of challenges, not challenges, there's lots of demands on that allocation. And so some schools have the ability to fund beyond that in different ways, and others have a little tighter, depending on lots of variables. So our goal is to take what we have traditionally called the technology refresh and to apply it, and again, a strategic way to get to a point where if we do this strategically over the next four years, we get on a cycle where every student, grades three through 12, has a device that is theirs to use for the school year. It would be assigned to them, it's their device to use for the school year. And then for grades K through two, we would give them a device at a rate of three to one. We would help schools with that. And then schools, of course, could use the resources that we've offset if they wanted to go one-to-one in those grades. But the learning and the studies that we've seen have demonstrated that that's the right path. So that's, that is our objective here, is that ultimately every single dollar that's in this is a device that's going directly into a student's hands. And we think that that's critically important. I mentioned to Ms. Wall earlier that really ultimately all this is, is the chalk and slate of the 21st century. And that we really owe it to our students to be equipping them with the learning tools they need to be successful. And again, as I mentioned, we're really the last district in Northern Virginia at this point that's not on a path to get there. And so that's really why I'm passionate about, I think this is a critical need for all of our students. And you mentioned, you know, we don't want to be, become top-heavy. Well, this is not an instance where any one of these dollars is staying at the central office. Every single one of these dollars is a device in a student's hand.
Just one more thing I'd like to add to that. So for example, Fairfax is giving a day off for them to plan their distance learning instruction in the event that schools are closed. We would be unable to do that. Because we don't have the, we don't have those computers. We're the only northern district that doesn't.
What Dr. Walts is saying, because I think it didn't come across, we wouldn't be able to give the day off to plan for distance learning, because we don't have the capability of distance learning, not that we can't give the day off to plan for, two weeks off. So let me be clear, we wouldn't, we don't have the ability currently to do distance learning at a, at a wide level, because of our, Ms. Argarpur?
So I do work for Fairfax County Public Schools, and there was some discussion about this. And in at least the, my understanding is in, I don't want to, well, I'll rephrase it this way. When it comes to students having access to the internet from home, when people have brought that up, there was a talk about being able to offer hotspots. Is that part of our digital equity plan as well?
Yes.
Okay. Any thoughts? Any further discussion? I mean, I, you know, I mean, I think it's a, it's a heavy price tag, it's a one-time cost. I mean, I, that is something that I think we should consider. I'm, you know, I'm not entirely convinced myself, one-to-one helps with, quote, equity, or even student performance. I'm not positive on that. I mean, I'm sure that there's a lot of studies out there on that, and that's one of those things that just me as a, as a school board member is just trying to learn more about. Ms. Wall?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I was, I had some thoughts on this. I think, to your point, I think it actually does increase equity across the board, because in a lot of schools, because they have really tight budgets and a lot of budgetary constraints, they're able to purchase technology. And we heard a lot from Stonewall High School and others about how, you know, from the kids, how they were feeling like they were, they didn't have the technology supports that they needed. And I think this, I like the idea of being more strategic with our technology refresh, and also increasing our access to technology, because that's the world our kids live in, and that's the way the world is going, as far as how they produce their content, their, their, their product, their work product. They do it digitally, and they transmit it digitally. And then as we move into something like Canvas, or something like that, where we have online lesson plans, we have new teachers that can just be right on the system, get the learning plan, and the kids can access it, and it's all digital. So I think, I think it's really forward-looking, and I think it will actually improve our outcomes, student outcomes. So I think, you know, I really want to improve our student outcomes, and make our good teachers, great teachers. So I see this as a way that we can do that.
Okay. Mr. Wilk?
Okay. I move that we reallocate $144,074 for the accountability, the additional data quality assurance coordinator, full-time position, 250-day grade 13 position, reallocate that to some of the other priorities we've been talking about. Who's coming up now?
Good evening, everyone. Let me just start with a little brief piece, and then I'll let Dr. Casada continue. The short answer is, we have more students and no new staff, all at the same time, for the last 10 years without adding staff, and probably 20,000 students. The amount of data that is collected, analyzed, and used throughout the division has grown tremendously, in addition to the fact that the state has changed the data requirements that we do. So in order to provide the data that we need for the Equity Advisory Council, who has a list, for the school board in the strategic plan presentation, and the data that's being asked for, it's a consistent growing need to be able to analyze data for a growing school division with no additional staff for 10 years. These are the kinds of reports to determine, among other things, the funding and compliance within the school division with the state. And I'll let Dr. Casada.
All right, I'll sit closer. Not to go on too long, but this position is designed, we have currently one person who does the state reporting. Other jurisdictions, our size and larger, have a lot more. And the state has consolidated the state reporting process to have a bunch of reports that used to be distributed across the organization now, kind of all come together. And when Keith mentioned the funding and compliance, the reports that go for official student membership in the fall, for the count of special education students in December, for our average daily membership in March, end of year, and graduation reports, that are, all of those are used for accreditation, as well as for funding. So the number of reports is growing, the deadlines are getting tighter, the, the way that things work with the new student information system requires us to extract and pull the data in ways that we didn't do before. So that's the explanation and rationalization, and it also helps, the goal would be for us to be able to be even more proactive with schools, to help them address data issues before they even get in there. Right now, with one person, it's always reactive to finding errors, as opposed to being able to do more training. So hence, that's kind of the vision we, we have.
I'd just like to add one more thing. So earlier tonight, we cut a quarter of a million dollars to supplement the work of accountability with external, with external providers. So given the fact that we've cut that, we still need to survey parents and kids about those kinds of issues, and that's going to have to fall back to our own department. So I'm really hoping that position does not get cut, in lieu of the fact that we cut a quarter of a million from helping with that. That was the first cut.
Ms. Jessie?
Dr. Casada knows that I'm the person who asks all the questions, and she's very kind and very, but I do know that the requirements for data and the time that it takes to do it, I, I just think that, I'm surprised she's able to give the kind of reports that she gives. I may not always agree with the, the data itself, and I may not agree with what we're doing with the data, but we do need someone. I support this position.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to get a current total, and the numbers that we're at in terms of being cut. I'm sorry, I lost track.
There's a balance of, if my math is correct, 200,000, is it?
200,000 what? 250,000, it was $500,000.
No, but they, they use some of that for professional learning.
Oh, what's our total?
Left, no, left. After this cut, it's 200,000, because they added back in 50,000 for professional learning.
No, we also, we're at 404,902 right now.
I don't think so.
Catherine, you got a running total?
So you're at 160,000 to the good, if the budget was fully funded? Or when, I should say. When the budget?
So I can hear the item, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the line items that she listed that we've used. Did she say that we funded the TAs?
Yeah.
Yes.
We didn't vote on that.
So the seven TAs, what is that? What are the, what is the value of the seven TAs, please? So are you, are we voting on that, or what's your pleasure there with the?
On the TAs, the seven TAs? You wanted to go to 8%. Do you want to do 8%?
So if you don't do the TAs, you have $405,000 to the good, correct? We need to check our math.
So if Dr. Walts is correct, you have 405, 4, 8% raise on the TAs, if that's what you're looking to do. Is that what you're looking to do?
Yes, I mean, that's, yeah, that was a goal, to move in that direction, yes.
So that's without doing anything on this, this other position?
Well, that's, I want the vote tally.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, we'll do that vote. So you want to vote on that now? Voting on the, which position is this now, we're? Accountability. Accountability, stats, statistician.
You can?
I'm sorry, I came late to the, to this, yeah, this party of the party.
Data coordinator.
But data coordinator position, I just want to remind the board that the state is about to unleash plethora of data requirements on equity and some other things, if, before we, I know, Justin, I'm sorry. I do, I do love you, but it's not personal. But I'm just trying to think about the, that coming down the pike. So that's really important, because there are going to be mandated requirements, from my understanding.
Okay. All in favor of removing the data position, data coordinator position, please vote aye. All opposed? Okay. So that one. So they're- Okay, so what, why don't we do this, then? Why don't we do this? Let us, let's, we still have a week before we vote on the final budget. We, we have done a lot of work tonight. One of the final things is, what can we do for a raise for TAs that's more than 4.8%? Let's let Dr. Walts and Mr. Wallingford take a look at where we are, have them do a quick look at maybe how close those positions are around the region, and where we are competitively in that regard, and then come up with, if we can find the money. If we can, then if not, we'd make this part of our budget vote next week on what we're going to do.
I, I don't, I'm sorry.
All right, well, that's an option. Dr. Walts first.
I just-
I'll defer to the board.
I just don't like, go back and do a study. I just, either we go with the 8% or not. I just think that we, that should not be a hard choice. I'm sorry.
Well, one of the things is, we don't know what the goalpost should be, right? Should it be 12, should it be 8, should it be 5, should it be 4? What can we afford to do? What can we do? So that's the reason I would ask them to do that. Ms. Williams?
We, I did also propose that we could do another work session, so if we did need additional follow-up. I know that doesn't excite probably anybody but me, but we, you know, we, we did all agree. I mean, if there's additional changes or things that you want answered at a later date, that's just an option I'm throwing out there as a reminder.
So this is really the only issue sort of hanging out there. Dr. Walts, he has a solution.
So my suggestion is that you vote on the 405,000, and to the extent possible, we will increase, we'll look at the TA salaries, and we'll raise it to that point. What was the 12% figure?
12% was 750,000.
Seven, something, right.
Seven, 780? 780, and what we have now is 400?
What do we say for 8%?
8% will be about 400, right? It's half of 780.
Turn it over, I mean, yeah. So you could vote on that, and we'll make it go as far as it will go.
Yeah, okay. Can we vote on that?
Propose, it's fine, I-
So I propose that we vote on using that 400 towards TA raises that are over and above the 4.8%, whatever percent that makes it out to. And then we'll look to see if we can find more money to get it up higher. But right now, we'll go to four, you know, moving it up, use that 400 towards salary for the TAs. All in favor of that, say aye. All opposed? Okay. Anything else? Mr. Wilk?
I just, again, you know, the money wasn't there because of votes that, you know, people thought were other priorities and important. So I, it wasn't where I wanted, but it's compromised, right? So I'm happy we got that.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns, thoughts? Then we have to go back into, close, well, we have to go, do we have to go back into vote to go into closed session again? So we'll go on the dais and vote to go into closed session. Thank you. We're going, it's going to be 10.01, this is, or 02, approval of closed session agenda. Do I have a motion? 10.02? Ms. Jessie?
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agendas recommended.
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
William seconds. Any discussion? Please vote.
No. I vote yes.
Did it come up?
No.
I mean, it didn't show up on the screen. Maybe hit five, or hit F5. All right, all in favor, vote aye. Any opposed? No, okay. Move on to enter closed session, I need a vote. Motion, 11.01.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711, the Prince William County School Board, enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss the performance of employee T20-47, and to take action as necessary under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1N8.
Any second? Ms. Rawson, seconds, discussion, please vote. Okay, so we got a closed session, right? Why is there another 11-point motion to enter closed session? We did it, right? Okay. I think we need to, what's the order we're going to do here? Are we doing the action item first, and then the certification, corrects?
Yes.
Okay. So whoever's not signed on, sign on, please. And F5, if you need to, F5. And then I'm asking for a motion as an order in 1401. Mr. Wilk?
I like to read it if you want.
Oh, Ms. Wall?
What did we say? I moved that? 1401. That the, I move that the Prince William County School Board authorize Division Counsel to retain legal counsel on behalf of the school board for the purpose of reviewing and evaluating a confidential personnel matter.
Second. Ms. Argarpur, seconds. Any discussion? Please vote.
I vote yes.
Okay, we'll move on to closed session certification, 1501. Ms. Wall?
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of March 11, 2020, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Williams, seconds, blindly. Any discussion? Please vote.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
I'll, I'll make a formal request that if we can help Ms. Williams with her computing, we have a big meeting coming up next Wednesday. There'll be a lot of people.
I'll be glad I can help. Thank you, thank you, Mr.- The vote is aye, yes, again, a missed motion, pass.
A motion, a meeting adjourned.